Mayor Coombs.
Here.
Council members Bagley.
Here.
Christensen.
Here.
Finley.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Peck.
Here.
Santos. Mayor, you have a form.
Okay, let's stand for Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're going to start with first call public invited to be heard, and first up is Joan Peck.
Hello, Mayor Coombs and council members. I am here to ask for your, Joan Peck, 1935 S. Avenue. I almost forgot the drill. I am here to ask for council and mayor's support on Amendment T to take slavery out of the Constitution. Amendment T asks voters to remove the exception to the slavery ban from the Colorado Constitution. Right now slavery is forbidden except as a punishment for crime in the Constitution. A yes vote on Amendment T supports removing fourteen words from Article II, Section 26 of our Constitution, shortening it to a simple prohibition of slavery with no exceptions. All one hundred members of the Colorado Legislature supported the concept of removing the language from the Constitution and referred Amendment T to the ballot. This language is outdated. It was written in the nineteenth century when African-Americans were seen as property, not people. There should be no exceptions that allow for the shameful dehumanization of others ever again. This archaic language allowing slavery is wrong. Freedom and equality are fundamental Colorado values which ought to be reflected in our state constitution. Removing the slavery exception is a first step in extending our values to all. Slavery is not a Colorado value. Thank you.
Thank you. Nicole Mohini?
I would like to wait to hear everything presented and then speak. Is that possible?
Okay, sure. I can move you down to the bottom. Mark Tuber?
I have a couple things I want to pass out. How are you doing today, council? It's Mark Tuber, 813 Main Street. I'm the manager of Greenhouse Hydroponics and Organics here in Longmont, a local grow store, and I wanted to talk to you guys today about the limitations of the average medical user. And I'm here today to talk about the medical users, not recreational. We want to differentiate that, of course. So I want to first start out that obviously if we are to limit to the six-plant limit, the average medical user is now having to provide for themselves. We obviously have to realize how much time that they, or little time they have. They're filled at doctor's office, doctor visits, their whole, most of their lives, and they don't have twenty, thirty hours to spend trying to grow, put the love and care into their plants that they, they can. The next thing I want to talk about is that obviously we're talking about medical users again, and these people are limited in very much in the nutrients and the chemicals that they're able to use in growing their plants. This very much limits the yield and the amount that they can get per plant because they have to use all organic stuff, because they don't want to put carcinogens in, in their plant. Obviously, they're trying to do this for, trying to cure cancer. They don't want to cause it. So the average plant and an average grower, these people can maybe get one to two ounces per plant. So the average marijuana cycle takes four months. So if we are limit these people to six plants, that means we can have three in flower, three in bench. So that means these, these people can maybe look to get three to six ounces per four months. So that breaks down to roughly, let's be honest, it breaks down to sixteen ounces at most a year, and for medical patients, I just don't think that cuts it. And I think that's just about my time, and thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for seeing me, council. Todd Burgler, 928 Corey Street. I'm here strictly to talk about dosage amounts for medical marijuana patients. I passed out a small flyer on dosing, dosing medical marijuana, as well as averages of THC per dosage. If you'd like, you can flip to the back page where it talks about an average dosage. I'm going to go straight to the mean. The mean is about four grams a day for most medical patients. That means they need roughly two ounces a month for their treatment, which kind of equates to about forty to fifty ounces a year. With the proposed limits, no caretakers and six, six plants per household, going back to Mark's point that he just made, we're looking at a deficit of thirty, thirty-five ounces a year for these patients. So that is simply my information for the evening, and thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. Paul Renix?
I'm sorry I don't have a handout. Thank you all for doing what you do. I know it's a lot of hard work, and I'm really grateful that all of you show up every week. First, I'd like to stand with council person.
First, you need to state your name and address.
I'm sorry. My name's Paul Renix. I live at 2128 24th Avenue in Longmont. First, I'd like to stand with council person Peck in removing the slavery exemption from current code. That's antiquity and just bad that we even have that word in our Constitution. But the reason I'm really here tonight is to talk about the proposed limits on medical marijuana patients. The voters for Amendment 20 and Amendment 64 made their choices pretty loud and clear. It's not too often that we have that sort of input from voters on any issue, and we have it pretty clearly on this issue over and over, and the polls currently are in the high eighties for people approving of medical marijuana. Colorado Department of Health just last week put down their proposal to limit caregivers just last week because it was going to harm sick people. This is in the news. Go hit Google. It's out there. The Colorado Department of Health has not been on the side of patients throughout the last, since 2000. I've been following this stuff. They've not been the biggest advocates. Just last week, they said, no, we can't do this because it was going to harm sick people. A lot of times we hear an argument that this is a federal issue, so it shouldn't be a state issue, shouldn't be a local issue. We're local here. You all live with me in Longmont, and I'm proud to live with you all in Longmont, and we, I get that there are some impacts, but there's a better way to do it. We don't just take recommendations from municipal league and just rubber stamp them because that doesn't always solve the problem. There are going to be tests of these laws that are passing in, in other areas. There will be cases that will cost other municipalities a lot of money to defend. Our state legislature is doing hard work to refine and define what caregivers can do, what patients can do, and they are deeply learned in this. There are legislatures that have taken this on as a pet project. They believe in taking care of patients. They believe that it's more important to worry about patients than to worry about people that have sensibilities to pot. This proposal is just not needed because of the state work. We can enforce, enforce existing code. We don't need Longmont to nanny patients and doctors and how they take care of themselves. We already have the regs to do this. Last year, when, when some of us were running for council, this came up in the election, and the, the comments and the answers that came to the paper were very much like, yes, we're all for medical marijuana, and the candidates all recognized that this was a big issue to, to the voters. And I just hope you'll remember that for next November because the voter's gone to. Thank you all. Thanks for coming.
Thank you, Paul. William Gritz?
Hello. I'm one of the patients that this is going to affect directly. My name is William Gritz, and I live at 4635 18th Street, Boulder, Colorado. I have a twenty-four-plant count, and my caretaker grows for me. He also grows medically for his wife and recreationally for himself. I need a variety of different marijuana varieties. There's different things for nausea, and there's different things for pain, and I have different medical ailments. I'm going to be emailing you guys in the next week, and we can talk about it directly. I don't want to publicly tell you. But the different varieties have different yields. If you have nausea and intestinal cramps, you may need specific varieties of marijuana. Those varieties may not produce that much. If you're making extract with bubble bags, which is legal because it's perfectly safe, it's done with ice water, to make edibles, you're going to need more plants. Six plants is ridiculous. Fifty would be somewhat reasonable, but nine, anything above, I would understand ninety-nine because that would obviate the federal. But I need organic. I need, I need it to be affordable, and I need it to be free of pesticides and herbicides, and I cannot find that in the dispensary market at a cost for someone on disability. There's no chance of affording that. This, this ordinance will bankrupt me or severely affect my health in a, in a major way, and this isn't, I really can't emphasize enough that this is almost a personal attack on my current health. This is, you're going to bankrupt me, or I'm going to have to take addictive opiates, get surgery to have an organ removed. I mean, this is serious. You have, you have to take this seriously, and you have to take the effect you're having on people who honestly have a problem with public speaking because it's frankly terrifying, and I'm not enjoying it right now. But thank you.
Thank you. You did great. Jana Wiglin?
That was pretty good, Mayor Coombs. Thank you. My name is Jana Wiglin. I live at 187 Wetterhorn Way, and I live and work in the city of Longmont, which I'm very blessed to do. I am a professional here in Longmont. I am a licensed insurance agent, currently not in the insurance market because I've moved into mortgages and will soon have a mortgage originator license. But I also have lupus, and I do have a medical marijuana license because some of the lupus medications that they want to provide to me, that my doctor has urged me to take, basically they're chemo drugs, which do more damage to the body than it's worth taking to me. I appreciate the fact that I am able to work, and I plan on working for the next twenty to thirty years or longer, if at all possible. But lupus is a very mysterious disease, so I can't guarantee that. So I'm doing everything in my power right now to make sure that I can keep working as long as possible. One of the things that I'm doing is instead of using a lot of these harmful drugs, I have turned to medical marijuana. And right now, I'm in a position where I'm able to go to dispensaries and buy what I need. However, there, right now, I don't have the time or the space. I'm working a full-time job and being involved in things like going to city council meetings and trying to stand up for my community. I don't have the time or the space to care for a bunch of plants in my own home. Therefore, if I wasn't going to dispensaries, I would need to have a caregiver grow for me. As marijuana is becoming more and more accepted, it's also becoming more and more expensive, and it will eventually get to a point where it's cost prohibitive for me. The other thing I wanted to bring up is there's more and more research lately that shows the benefits of cannabis for autoimmune-related diseases as well as cancers. But autoimmune-related diseases would include lupus. It would include rheumatoid arthritis. It would include muscular sclerosis, muscular dystrophy. There are all kinds of autoimmune-related diseases that this would apply to. Live plants are the best, especially in the form of juicing, and you need a lot more than nine plants, a lot more than six plants to be able to do that. You need closer to twelve plants per individual constantly being grown in a live form, not going to seed, not for the THC, and there's no danger from any kind of pesticides or, or solvents because you're using the live plant in the form of a juice two to three times a day. Council, I want to thank you for being professional about this, for being open and willing to listen to us, medical patients, and I appreciate your time today. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Jonathan Singer?
Good evening, council members. Jonathan Singer, 2201 14th Avenue, number 2-204, Longmont, Colorado. And Mayor Proton Bagley, I'm not up here to issue any new challenges. Same for you, Mayor Coombs, but thank you for doing the right thing for our vets.
I guess I better check my Facebook when I get home.
You know, that's why I came here, actually. So, but no, in all seriousness, thank, thank you for, for paying attention to the issues relating to our vets. On that issue, I wanted to actually come here today to let you learn a little bit from my experiences working on the issue related to recreational medical marijuana. You know, I, I used to joke that in high school, going to high school in Boulder, I had to rebel in high school by not using marijuana. So I find it kind of funny that, that I'm one of the people that actually not only wrote a lot of the regulations relating to marijuana, but also a lot of the freedoms. And so you've heard from a number of patients today that talk about the issue relating to plant count limits and what that means. And so I did some off-the-cuff calculations and looked at, okay, what would one plant yield? Maybe it's one ounce, maybe up to four ounces. It depends on the strain. Takes about three to four months when you grow it and cure it. So that means over the course of a year, you grow, you can do about sixteen ounces per plant, assuming zero crop failure, no problems, and everything is, is an ideal situation. But then you got to realize, working, and I do, working with kids, with epilepsy, with cancer, they can't smoke marijuana. It has to be in a tincture. It has to be distilled. And so now you're taking sixteen ounces of plant. That might distill into something like ninety grams of concentrate. Once again, that sounds like a lot until you realize that one or two grams per day, that equals forty, from one plant, forty, you get about forty-five days of medicine. Six plants, you get maybe two-hundred-and-seventy days of medicine. Once again, assuming everything is absolutely ideal. There's no dispensaries in Longmont. There's no, so you have a transportation issue. The second thing is you've got no issues relating to, you've got nothing related to cost. A gram might cost a couple hundred dollars. So be thoughtful in what, what you do here. Senate Bill 15-14 actually puts out a prescription to make sure that our caregivers are licensed and registered through the state. I encourage you to work with our state government to find a way to make your regulations work seamlessly with our state regulations that are just going live as of January of 2017. So I want to be here as a resource for that. We figured out a lot of the problems, but we leave it to the locals to enact a lot of those local changes. But a six-plant count cap doesn't do it. So I encourage you guys to work closely with me. I'm going to be a resource for you. Representative Foote has also passed bills. Please use us. This is what we're here for. We're here to serve you. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Jonathan. Jerry Springer?
Sorry. It's Jerry Sheppard, S-H-E-P-E-R-D. Although I can tell you a funny story about Jerry Springer a couple months ago. I'm Jerry Sheppard. I'm an attorney. My office address is 710 11th Avenue, Suite 203D in Greeley. I have a lot of friends in Longmont, and I'm a resident. I have a lot of friends in Longmont, and so I think it's an awesome town to come to and see my friends and to be visiting the community. I'm also a member of the Colorado Normal, I'm on the Board of Directors, I'm also a member of the Normal Legal Committee. Last week, the Colorado Normal Board of Directors passed a resolution opposing this proposed ordinance, and it's nothing personal against anybody who is trying to find the best way to solve some problems, but we do see, as for some of the reasons we articulated last week, that there are a lot of problems here. And to digress a little bit, I went to a presentation about hemp and talked a little bit about the history of the drug war. And unfortunately, the reason we are here is that cannabis was made illegal through a Stamp Act in 1937, and if you look at some of the history, it was made illegal because of vested business interests that had a rival paper processing process to hemp for paper, and there were also some racial overtones to that, too. Cannabis was previously legal, and the attempts are now to re-legalize cannabis. Cannabis has been used as a medicine for centuries. But I have to reiterate some of the concerns of civil liberties, of state and federal constitutional rights, and I ask that we not give law enforcement a blank check. We do have a warrant process if there's something inappropriate going on, they can go to the court to ask for a warrant, and judges are going to give that proper consideration. In our state constitution, probable cause has to be reduced to writing. I'd like to digress a little bit and ask, how many people are here to, in essence, tell the Longmont City Council that they need to rethink and even table this ordinance? Thank you all for being here. I don't have too much more to say, but I just would encourage you to consider tabling this, work with Representative Singer, work with many of the patients who are a lot more articulate about the very real cost to them, the cost prohibitive aspect of trying to treat their various ailments, and we should be concerned about having to be forced to turn to pharmaceuticals when that industry does not always act in the best interests of people who it serves. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Brian Johnston?
Hi, Brian Johnston, 926 Kaufman Street. And I'll be very quick about this. But being here last week and watching the presentation about Next Light and seeing how you guys have exceeded projections, having spoken with dozens of people who have Next Light, I don't yet, but I'm, cannot wait, and looking at the projections, what, you're 30% above 2018 numbers already. Incredible. And I think that the council, the city manager, and everyone on the administration side deserves great accolade for Next Light. It was a visionary move. We have the, I've seen rankings anywhere from the first to the third fastest of anywhere in the country, and that makes me proud to be a resident of Longmont, and that's something we can really brag about, that's something that's going to really contribute to this city, and I really believe that you guys deserve some type of awesome award for what you did with Next Light. And I just want to say thank you for this time and for your leadership on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ashley Weber?
Good evening, my name is Ashley Weber, and I live on Feather Reed Avenue here in Longmont, Colorado. And I just want to speak to you guys a little bit about the language of the marijuana, the regulations that you guys are thinking about putting into place. I wanted to thank you for listening to what we had to say last week and taking it into consideration, but I wanted to kind of get into what a medical patient actually needs and what I would need. I'm not quite sure if you guys are aware, what a medical patient currently uses or needs in their daily life. I currently use full-plant extract, and I will use about one gram a day. And you can get about 50 to 60 grams out of one pound. So that's to say, again, when you're going downstairs and you have very limited plants, you can't get them that big, especially not using the fertilizers that the big dispensaries around here do use, because if it is organic, it's harder to get the flowers as big as you would need them. I also use concentrates, which helps with spasticity, and it is inhaled, and it helps instantaneously. And I also use the flower of the plant, as well as edibles, and even suppositories. We have many cancer patients who use suppositories because there's 70% absorption compared to 30% in edibles. And to put that into perspective, 15 grams would last a patient 15 days. And a gram at the recreational dispensary, if you guys were to put this into place, is about $40 to $60. So that's a lot of money per gram. So I just want to thank you for listening, and I hope you consider tabling this language. And I understand that there does need to be regulations put into place, but as Jonathan Singer just mentioned, that you guys would be great in collaborating with one another, and I would really hope that you would take into consideration medical patients being in this conversation when it's held again. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric Selinger?
Hello, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for taking the time to speak with all of us about these issues, and I just want to take a moment to introduce myself. My name is Eric Selinger, I live at 15850 West Colfax. I'm down here today, I'm a greenhouse manufacturer, and my opinion is, I look at this, the situation that's going on here in Colorado, and the supply meets demand, the lack of efficiency, it's got to go outdoors and into the sunlight. One of the concerns that I really have is the quality, you hear the people talking about organic, half the people I've met in Colorado that I've met buy gray market weed because they're concerned about what they're going to be getting from the dispensaries. So I believe that growing your own is the future of food, cannabis, everything, because it's about transparency, it's about knowing where it came from and how it was treated. And I'm an advocate of greenhouses, and what my question is for you is, with a product, with cannabis, the legalization of cannabis, why does it need to remain so discreet and grown indoors when we've got all this wonderful Colorado sunlight to use? And that's basically my presentation to you today, and I just wanted to present that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else that'd like to come and speak? Come on down, oh, that's right, Nicole Mohini.
Oh, I'm grown up now. Hello, thank you. My name is Mohini Nicole Summers, I am, I live at 706 James Street in Southmore Park. I love living in Colorado, and I think Longmont is an excellent place to be. I enjoy the people here, and I like the diversity of people here, and I thank you all so much for your time and dedication to that, it's important. I'm also a veteran of the United States Army, I served in Germany for two years, and I served in California for two. I was a lightweight diesel mechanic. I'm also a medical professional, I do licensed massage therapy, and I do have a practice in Longmont. I'm really not here today to talk the details about necessarily medical marijuana use, although I found it very enlightening to hear my brothers and sisters talk about how important it was and give those statistics, and I was like, oh, okay, that's a big deal. And I appreciate you guys taking the time out to consider that, because that's really serious for them. I do use cannabis salve in my work. Of course, people have to sign off because they have to have the choice to do that, but it, there's nothing like it to curb muscle spasticity, nothing like it. There is no arnica over the counter, it quiets muscle nerve conduction instantly. That really genuinely helps people who are in a lot of muscle skeletal pain, so I would like to give that information. My main, being a veteran of the United States Army, you know, you really, you go because you're defending your culture and your homeland and your people, and the freedom as a patriot of our country, that everybody has a right to have their own domain, and that's my, that's really where I'm coming from. Kind of piggybacking Jennifer Shepherd, Jerry Shepherd, you know, really talking about the Fourth Amendment, "The right of the people to be secure in their persons houses papers and effects against unreasonable searches and seizures shall not be violated, and no warrants shall issue but upon probable cause." And my question is, how will you establish probable cause, supported by an oath or affirmation and particularly describing the place to be searched and the persons or things to be seized? And so really, that's where, who, where, what's the jurisdiction and who, how are you going to come across that? You know, my concern is, I don't even really partake of marijuana, but I am a resident, and what if somebody decided that they had something against me, and then they wanted to go ahead and say, "That's 706, it smells like there's too much marijuana growing there." And by the way, how do you distinguish the smell of marijuana from somebody smoking it, which is legal on your premises? That's something that we have to consider. And then, I'm not even aware of this, and then during the night, somebody put six plants in my backyard, and then the police come. Now who's to say that that couldn't happen? And that's a concern. That's a big concern for me. You know, I understand that things need to be regulated and that, and that, is that my time?
Yeah.
Beep!
Sorry.
Well, I would just, if I may finish with a quote from Martin Luther King, and I think I, I'm speaking about civil liberties, "What affects one directly affects all indirectly." I can, I can never be what I ought to be until you are what you ought to be. This is the interrelated structure of reality, and that's Dr. Martin Luther King. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that'd like to come down and speak?
Well, I'd like to thank everybody for educating us. I guess I know the answer's not six plants. So, I mean, obviously, we're going to have to take a broader look at this problem. You know, I think the intent wasn't that we want to come in and be, you know, the hammer's going to crack down and everybody has got, you know, too many plants, but it's when we start blowing up transformers and, you know, I don't know what that level is, but, and we're certainly not interested in, you know, going into people's houses without warrants if they don't want us in there. So, anyway, thanks for coming out, and, you know, we got to look at this and understand this problem. But, you know, the main reason why we brought this up in the first place was to prevent blowing up transformers in the neighborhoods and when we have excessive smell problems that are just bothering a lot of people, so that's the intent of what we're trying to control.
Councilmember Peck?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I would also like to ensure or assure people that we would never enter a home without a warrant. I don't think we ever have, the police department never has, nor will they ever do that. I think that the discussion of that in the newspaper only went so far because that was brought up at the meeting, but then the second half of the discussion was that that wouldn't happen. So I just want to assure you all, nobody's going to break into your house. Thank you.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Rarely, I think I'm kind of viewed as the anti-pot guy on council, but the, but the, I echo, I echo the statements you just heard from Councilmember Peck and the mayor. My concern is only one of, I label myself a libertarian, meaning people should do what they want, as long as you don't impact other people. And so I think what, and I wasn't here when we originally, when the council originally addressed this, but in general, as we're going forward, me personally, one of seven is looking for a way to keep smell away from neighbors, keep power transformers from blowing up, and allowing people who want to smoke pot to grow their plants. So, I mean, whatever that looks like, you know, don't know, we obviously need to talk about it and figure it out. So appreciate you guys coming out and saying what you said. These handouts actually are pretty good, and speaking to your local government officials, either public invited to be heard or the emails and the phone calls, it helps, because we're just people that got elected. So when we don't have information, it's good to have information. So thank you.
And I can honestly say that I banged my hand against the corner of the table and I couldn't even make a fist, but I took this marijuana saw with CBD on it, and now it's like, I mean, it works. All right, so now it's time for, oh, excuse me.
Councilmember Christensen?
I do think it would be wise to table this discussion about this, about home grows until we have a chance to involve Representative Singer in it, because he really, on a statewide basis, knows a huge amount. And it would also be useful to have somebody in that discussion who has a chronic illness that requires marijuana. And I'd just like to remind the city council that when I did bring up the idea that we were going to be entering houses, I was told that, without a warrant, unless people refused, I was told that, well, we couldn't give them notice because they would simply throw away the plants, so we had a right to enter without, that we had a right to enter if a landlord gave permission. And so I do think that that's an issue that does concern people, and rightfully so, and we could simply drop the problem by saying that a warrant would be required. But anyway, I do...
The ordinance right now is written that a warrant is required. That's the way it was always written.
Well...
Just that scary language in it, though, makes people nervous.
No, it's written so that if a landlord gives permission, if it's rental, yes, and so anyway. Anyway, I do think that it would be wise to table this until we have some more information. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, let's get on with our study session topic.
Mayor, if there are no motions to add agenda items to future agendas, and there are no special reports and presentations, we'll move on to item 5A at 2017 budget discussion. Jim Golden is making his way to the podium.
Thank you.
Mayor Coombs, members of council, I'm Jim Golden, Director of Finance. Thanks for that little delay, give us a chance to get set up here. Actually, I'm going to introduce Budget Manager Teresa Malloy and Senior Budget Analyst Melody Polero, who will now cover our priority-based budgeting and how we've worked that into this proposed 2017 budget and how we'll be dealing with it a little bit into the future, so...
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Again, I'm Teresa Malloy, the Budget Manager, and sitting next to me here is Melody Polero. So she is a Senior Budget Analyst on our staff, and she is really the expert in our online priority-based budgeting model, so she's going to be kind of running the show while I do the talking this evening. But first, what we wanted to do before we actually take you into the model itself, we wanted to give you an overview of priority-based budgeting, the steps, the process, where we've come in developing the information that you're going to see in the model. So priority-based budgeting involves multiple steps, and step one was to identify the right results. So you all, City Council, were the ones who identified these steps, or these results, I should say. So really, the question was, what services should the city provide to the community? And you all, with feedback from residents, business owners, service providers, and city staff, came up... staff, came up with this list of our results. And this is the basis for priority-based budgeting. The second step, then, is to define the results. So, what we mean by define the results is really to identify those outcomes and the underlying assumptions and factors that influence those outcomes or the results as well. So, accurate prioritization requires a clear definition of the results so that cause-and-effect relationship can be identified and reflected in the scoring process. So, these definitions and assumptions were developed, again, by City Council with feedback from the community. So, I just wanted to quickly show you, and you'll all recall these, these are what we call our results maps. So, this is our result with the definitions. So, this is the one for safe community. And these are on our website for citizens who do wanna view these in a little bit more detail. So, safe community, reliable, innovative, and resilient infrastructure, thriving economic climate, and I know I'm going through these very quickly, but we do wanna get to the model here, vibrant amenities and opportunities for all, and responsible internal operations and governance. So, each one of those results had a corresponding result map that showed the definitions. So, then the next step was to really value those results. So, again, this was a community involvement process that, where we asked the community how, to place a relative value essentially on these results. So, this was that, if we give you $1,000, how would you spend it in achieving these results? Or, as we also called it, it was that whole chip-in-the-bucket exercise. And these were the results, the results of the results. So, these were the relative values that the community placed on our results. And these relative values really helped us in the scoring process. So, they were used to weight the scores in relation to the program providing or supporting the specific result. So, step four, then, was to score the programs. And so, the process to score the programs was really a two-step process. It started by the departments scoring their own programs. And I do wanna spend a little bit of time taking you through the various steps of the scoring, because you're gonna see some of that information reflected in the model. So, the first part of the program's score was, how does that program influence the result? So, if it had, if it was essential or critical to achieving the result, so safe community, reliable, innovative, and resilient infrastructure, if that program is essential or critical in achieving that result, it scored a four. If it had a strong influence on the result, it scored a three. If it had some degree on achieving the result, it scored a two. And then, if it had some but minimal, it scored a one. And then, if it has no influence, it scored a zero. So, each one of those programs went through that scoring process for each one of the results.
Yeah.
The scoring-
We have a quick question. Go ahead, Councilmember Bagley.
Somebody else might have their-
Sorry.
There we go. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Coombs. So, just a quick question. Relative to last year, this is the same process, correct? So, my question is, did you guys go through everything again? Are you basically recapping what we learned last year? Or did you guys redo it all again this year?
So, Mayor Coombs and Councilmember Bagley, we're just recapping what we did last year. This process is a pretty labor-intensive process, and once we score the programs, that score is used year after year until there is a need to re-score that.
Okay. That's all I needed to know. Thank you.
So, the programs are also scored for some basic program attributes. One of those program attributes is the mandate to provide the program. So, again, it's a zero-to-four scoring, and four is really something that is out of City Council's control. So, it's something that's mandated by federal, state, or county legislation. And the thought behind this is, those are a lot less likely that we can change those, and so they score a four. A three is a program that is required by our charter or required in order to comply with regulatory standards. So, again, something that is not quite as easy to change the mandate on. A two is something that is required by code or a resolution or is required to fulfill a franchise or contractual agreement. So, that is something that is more in our control to change, so therefore, it scores a little bit lower. And then, a one is something that is a professional organization to meet a published standard or as a best practice. And again, zero, meaning there is absolutely no mandate. The next basic program attribute is reliance on the city to provide the program. So, four is, we are, the city is the sole provider, and there's no other public or private entity that provides that service. Three, city is the current sole provider, but there are other public or private entities that we could contract with. We just don't at this point. Two, the program is offered by another governmental or nonprofit. One, the program is offered by other private businesses, but they're not located within the city. And then, a zero is, those other public or private businesses are located within the city limits. Another basic program attribute was portion of community served. So, a four is, we're serving the entire community. Or, the other thing to keep in mind is, we're looking at this from portion of community served, if it is a community program. But remember, we also have internal or governance programs. And so, the way that staff evaluated scoring for this one is portion of the organization served. So, we're providing those services to, internal to the city, so it's portion of the internal city that's being, the service is being provided to. So, 100% is four, at least 75 is three, at least 50 is two, 10 is one, and anything less than 10% was a zero. And then, cost recovery of the program. So, again, it's on a graduated scale there with, you know, 100% being a four, all the way down to absolutely no cost recovery being a zero score. So, I mentioned there was two steps, two components to the scoring process. So, the departments did their own scoring, and then we had a peer review. So, this was an internal group of city staff that really consisted of a cross-section of all departments that reviewed the program's scores and either noted their agreement or their disagreement with the department's scores, did some follow-up with the departments, you know, asked a lot of questions around what does this program really do, and then provided their own peer review score to, essentially, they were validating those scores. The score that's in the model, then, is really, it depends. If they agreed with the score, it represents the department's score. If they disagreed with the score, it could either be the peer review score, if there was really valid reason to change it, or if there wasn't valid reason to change it, it could reflect the department's score. And then, the fifth step in the program, and this step, really, we did kind of in conjunction when we, as we were doing some of those others. And this is the step to cost the program, to cost the programs that gets updated every year. So, then, the departments will allocate their adopted budget from, both from a personnel and a non-personnel perspective to their programs. And then, those scores and costs are then located in, loaded, sorry, into the tool. And then, we get what you guys have seen as the quartile graphs and all of the information that goes along with it. So, now, we're gonna take you into the tool itself. So, I think the last time that we had conversation about this, and when you all met with our consultants from the community or from the Center for Priority-Based Budgeting, they talked to you about an online version. So, that's what this is. It is now finally available. We now have our data loaded into it. And this is something that we can now make available to our residents, to the public, as well as to internal departments. So, what we've created here for you is a, is essentially the tool, the way that we intend to be able to make it available to the public. So, it's got a lot of information in here, but it is just a modified version of the tool itself. The tool itself has a lot more options that staff can use to actually update information. That is not gonna be included in, of course, what we provide to the public. Really, the public is just gonna be able to do searching and run some reports. But we have kind of limited access. So, first of all, we want to start by taking you into our 2016. And so, this gets back to, that was the information that we updated last year. And that is really the full model that we have right now, the full year's worth of information that we have right now in this model. We are gonna take you to 2017 information, but it is a very limited subset of information. And then, we also wanna talk to you, as we mentioned in the council communication, talk to you a little bit about those five policy questions that the Center for Priority-Based Budgeting developed in this tool. So, Melody is gonna log in as a guest, and this is how we'll set this up again so that the public can access this. And we're gonna go right to the RAD tool to start with. So, this is, as she's loading it, so this is, this is that graph, that quartile graph that you guys have all seen. So, this should look rather familiar to you. This is, again, our 2016 adopted budget numbers, so it does not include any additional appropriations. It really is just adopted budget at this point. $206.8 million we have in here. Well, what we can say is that our adopted budget for 2016 is more than $206.8 million. And so, there are some very specific things that are not included in this model, and that was intentional. So, all of our CIP projects and the dollars associated with that are not included because we didn't use this tool to prioritize our CIP. Things like transfers between funds are not included in this model. Things like debt service payments, and there's, we've got some pretty large dollars that go towards debt service payments, are not included in this model. So, really, what that $206.8 million is made up of is personnel costs and all of the other associated operating costs that are part of our adopted budget that go towards providing those programs that are, have been identified by our city staff. So, as you can see, it's just your basic quartile presentation of the data with $107.7 million being in Quartile 1. So, those are our very highest-scoring programs, followed by the Quartile 2, Quartile 3, and then the Quartile 4 programs. You can, the model does allow us to further separate community programs. Actually, I'm sorry, before we go there, can you show them the comparison? So, one of the neat things that CPBB did is allow us to look at how we compare to other communities that are using this tool. And there are, how many? Forty-five communities that are currently using this tool. So, that is just a small representation of all of the organizations that do priority-based budgeting. It is just the ones who have taken it to this step like we now have in using the online tool. So, out of those 45 that we're comparing to here, I think we are showing here that we are doing fairly well. We have more programs and costs in Quartile 1 and 2, and less in Quartiles 3 and 4. So, now, we wanna kind of show you, so go back to just the RAD. Wanted to show you that, so again, this is, this is all programs, governance and community or governance and community programs. And we can, through these filters up here, look at just community programs. So, these are the programs that provide direct services to the community. And again, we've got a lot of costs, a lot of programs and costs in those Quartile 1 and 2, Quartiles 1 and 2, which is, which I think is, really speaks well for our programs meeting the desired results. You can also do a comparison here. We won't take you into that, but you can. So, let's now look at the governance programs. So, again, that's what our governance programs look like. So, governance programs, again, are those internal support programs that are providing support to the other departments that are providing the direct services. So, the model also allows you, then, to filter by fund. So, you can scroll down and pick whichever fund it is you wanna look at. It allows you to filter it by department. You can pick whatever department you wanna look at. And then, so, so Melody, why don't you go ahead and generate the list of programs? So, can we, if, well, go ahead and generate the list. So, up here at the top, she's gonna switch it back to all program types. Up here at the top is a download functionality. So, you can download that list of programs now that make up what we were just looking at, so that you can look at them more specific. It's gonna give you the actual list of programs. So, the first tab will be from a fund perspective, so each fund and the programs that are in it. The next tab is from a department perspective, and then just the total list of programs. So-
Councilmember Peck.
Sorry to interrupt you, but in this list, is this broken down by quartile? Or is it total budgeted fund for the year, for the budgeted year?
Yeah, there it is.
Okay, thanks. I didn't see that.
Correct. You can get to the quartile. We just need to scroll over. But it's got cost as well as the quartiles.
Thanks a lot.
Okay, so, we can close out of that. Let's go back, then. Let's go back then. So, so the next piece of information that is available in this online tool then is what they're calling the CPBB portal. And this is where we can take a look at information more, a little bit more granularly, I guess, if you will. So when you first come in here, you'll always have to click load, to, to load the data when you're clicking around. But when you first come in here and load it, what you're going to see is basically pie charts. And it's, and it's breaking our information, our programs, based on those that are provided to the community and, and those that are governance. And then of those community programs, how, how are they broken down by department? And then of the governance programs, how are they broken down by department? So then, across the top, there's these tabs that you can click on. And now we're going to get into actual, more detailed information on the community results, and then the same for the governance results. So what this information is showing us is all of the programs at this point, because we haven't filtered it by department yet. So this is all programs across all departments, and really how, how they scored in terms of their contribution to the results. So those that are dark blue have a strong contribution to the result. The result being those across the bottom. So, so again, these are community results, so we're looking at infrastructure, economy, safety, and then opportunities for all. And so when we say a strong contribution, back to the scoring, these are the programs that scored a four or a three for these results. The thing to, to keep in mind here, well, those that have a, some contribution scored a two or a one for the result. Those that have no contribution scored a zero for that particular result. So the thing to keep in mind here is that our programs, when we scored our programs, we scored them against every result. Now there are programs that scored very high in a, in a given result, maybe somewhat high in another result, and maybe zero in other results. So just because we've got programs, or just because this is showing no contribution, doesn't mean that program didn't score high contribution for a different result. The other thing I think to keep in mind is the dollars that you see on this axis are not the total dollars. So, so it could be, it's, it's additive here. So if a program scored for infrastructure and is scored for economy, then, then that's cumulative here. It's, those same dollars are counted twice here. You can toggle, if you want to look at the, at the graph a slightly different way, you can toggle it, it back and forth, just, it really is your preference in how you want to look at it. As Melody just showed you, if you hover over any one of those pieces of that graph, it tells you the dollars that are, for the programs that scored strong contribution for that result. Questions on that? So you want to scroll, scroll down. So the other thing that, that this section here will show you is a pie chart. Again, it's really a pie chart based on the department and how they scored. So this is really just looking at those that scored a strong contribution to the result. And then if we keep scrolling down, you're going to be able to see the actual programs that have the strong contribution to the result. So one of the things that this kind of, this piece of the model shows us really, in terms of the details here, is only those programs that have a strong contribution. It doesn't unfortunately show us all of those programs that have some contribution, or the programs that have no contribution. You can export it to Excel. A lot of these reports can be exported to, to Excel within this, this tool.
Councilmember Moore.
Could you scroll back down to that list again, please? A little bit more? So, there's one seventy-five point two listed twice, and they have the same numbers in them. Can you explain that, please? So it's like lines two and three? So they, oh, they, they scored in two different categories, is that correct?
Yes, so it's, it exists in two different categories, so that's the scoring for each result it scored in.
Thank you.
So this was the community results, you, the same information on the tab for the governance results. It really does show you the same, same type of information, just a different subset of So any questions on our sixteen data? The, the other piece that we wanted to show you is, there is a section here called Download Reports. And, and what this is, is it's a predefined report that will show us essentially all of the programs and all of the different components associated with the programs. So rather than running this right now, because it's, it's very large, it does take us a couple minutes, we saved it, because it produces an Excel file, so we saved it. So we're going to go over here to Excel. But, but, but rest assured, when you run it, so, so sorry, Melody, will you, let's just show everyone how it can be run. So the first thing you're going to have to do is create the report, and then it's going to come back and tell you that the report is created. And then you need to click the download button in order for it to download, and that's what generates the Excel file. This will take quite some time. So we're going to go to the Excel file that we saved. So, so again, this is a report of all the programs in, in the model right now. And the first little section will kind of give you a recap of the RAD tool, show you it by quartile. And column S is the number of FTE. Unfortunately, it doesn't have titles on it for us, but column S is the number of FTE. And column T is, programs, sorry, I drew a blank there, number of programs. So, so then down below is the actual data itself. And so each color-coded section here gives you a little bit different information. So the kind of pink color-coded section here is what the, the model refers to as the program inventory. This is our list of programs. The green gives you the financial information, so the costs, the number of FTE, those types of things. And then in, in these next three sections is the actual scores and how that program scored for each component. So again, the basic program attributes that we just spoke about, and then whether it was scored against community results or governance results. And when, when you first load this, what comes up is all of the community programs first. But if you, we scroll all the way to the bottom, you're going to start seeing numbers now, nothing in where community results are, and numbers where the governance results are. So again, this is the details of the scoring. So we thought that would be a, a good thing to make available, because this is really where the rubber hits the road, and the details of, of what you're seeing in that model, what makes up what you're seeing in that model. Okay, so we're going to go back to the model now, and if there aren't any questions on sixteen, I'm going to have Melody now switch it over to seventeen. So what we have done for 2017, so I mentioned earlier that 2017 is kind of a subset of what you've seen in sixteen. So what we're going to see in seventeen is just our new additional funding requests that were funded, that we are, are, have included in our proposed budget. So it totals about nine point five million. So the majority of our 2017 budget is not in here, because we haven't taken the step to cost these out yet. But what we did load was the additional funding requests that we've been talking to you all about over the past couple weeks. So I think the thing, the, the key here is, the, this presentation uses the scoring from sixteen, I'm sorry, uses the costing from sixteen, and we took the seventeen requests and allocated them along those same lines, okay? So if we were to, or I should say, when we re-cost seventeen, it may look slightly different than this, because we just haven't gone through that total costing of those programs yet. I think what, what we really wanted to show you, though, is that the majority of our additional dollars that have been added to our budget from an additional request are really to the, the higher programs, those that fall within quartile one and quartile two. We have a little bit more in quartile three, and then we have about four hundred thousand that are in quartile four. I guess the other thing I do need to let you all know is, this does not include our pay increases. It just includes new positions and all of those additional requests that our, our departments and divisions made that we have been, that we have included in our proposed budget. So what makes up that three hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars is, a hundred and fifty-eight of that is, is programs that, or is, is dollars that won't stay where it's at. So we had mentioned that we included a hundred and seventeen thousand five hundred dollars in a non-departmental account number that, it, from one-time dollars, that we were going to use if that minimum wage ballot initiative passes. If that does pass, these dollars are going to get allocated back to the departments within the general fund, and, and will then be reflected based on the programs where they're getting allocated to. So it's just sitting here kind of as a, as a temporary placeholder. If it doesn't, if that ballot language doesn't pass, then we won't be spending those dollars, and they'll go back to fund balance at the end of the year. The other piece, we have two more pieces that are included in there, and that is the unarmed guard for about forty-eight thousand dollars, and the campus supervisor for about seventy-one thousand dollars that Karen Roney spoke to you about last week. So those are, again, also in a non-departmental account number, and because we haven't scored them yet, they're reflecting right now in quartile four. So once they, once those really get scored, and, and we know what programs they're going to be supporting, they'll be reflected in, in the model differently. So that really makes up the bulk of that three hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars. The rest of it is all of the additional requests that were identified to support all programs. And because, so things like overtime increases or temporary wages that really go to support all programs across the department, some of them are supporting fourth quartile programs, and so that's why they're being reflected here. So I think that's about all we really wanted to show you from a 2017 perspective. Do you guys have questions on 2017?
Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you for presenting this. I'm really excited that it's available to the public and to, to us, too, because there are all kinds of people in town who will find this fascinating. But it's very, it's very helpful to us, too. I have one small, incredibly trivial request. Please correct the spelling of opportunities for all. Okay, thank you.
We will take care of that. Okay, so the final thing we wanted to show you, and, and what we mentioned in the council communication, was the, the, the model has some policy questions that were developed by the Center for Priority-Based Budgeting. And so we wanted to kind of take you through those really quickly here this evening. So, and we're going to use our 2016 data to show you this, because that really is a, a representation of, of a complete adopted budget. So the first one basically is asking the question, are we over-providing to high mandate programs with low relevance? So when we say high mandate, we're looking at those programs that scored a four. So remember, those programs that scored a four for mandate are federal, state, or county mandated, so very high mandates. And in terms of all the other basic program attributes, we really are running it wide open here for, so anything from zero to four for a score. And then we're looking at just those programs that are within quartile three and quartile four. So this is the policy question as designed by CPBB. We can, I mean, this is interactive, we can change this if we, if we wish, but, but what CPBB is, is trying to get organizations to really focus on is, are you essentially putting too much dollars to meet mandates? So that was why they, they designed this policy question. And so when we run this policy question, we see that we have a million dollars, a little over a million dollars, in the third quartile. So again, we're looking at quartile three and quartile four. We don't have any dollars in quartile four, so that's a good thing. I, the other thing you can do, too, is get to the, the list of programs that actually... Sorry, so, keep scrolling down. So, so there's your typical RAD tool. The comparison to those other forty-plus entities that are using this, I think we look pretty good from, from this policy question perspective. The spending across departments, so you're going to see a general theme in the way that CPBB presents this information. And then the, the model will also allow you to generate those list of programs. So you can click that button at the bottom, it's going to produce the list of those programs.
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mary. Just to be clear, but three was not the federal, not the state, not the county, it's us.
Three is charter.
Sorry, three is charter. Charter or mandate to meet a federal legislation.
Wait, so.
Let me, let me read it to you.
Federal legislation? I thought that was number...
So, so if it is required by federal, state, or county, that's a four.
Yeah.
If three is... If three is charter or incorporation documents or required in order to comply with regulatory agency standards.
Right, so we can't, but isn't that, we're pretty much required to, though, right? That's what required means.
Yes.
Right? So what are the programs, so what are you proposing here?
Well...
What's the policy question? If we're either obligated by charter, if we're obligated by, I mean, if we're obligated, what's the policy?
Yeah.
Go to jail? Pay money? Vote no.
So Mayor Coombs and Councilman Bagley, so I think what CPBB is trying to get the organizations to think about from this perspective is, so you're required to do it, you've got to do it, but do you really need to spend as much money as you are to meet the minimum requirements?
So can we see the rest?
What's the minimum requirement number?
Well, that's the $64,000 question. That's what we would need to explore.
So I think if you look at the next one down, can you slide down, Melody? So what they're, no, up, one more. Go up.
Yeah.
Right there. So what they're saying is in this mandated portion of this, that how much are you spending when you look at the other jurisdictions? They're spending significantly more to meet those mandates compared to what we're spending to meet those mandates. Now, if we were at the end of the gray line, then we would be going, what's going on here? How do we need to look at this? Are we spending too much money in this area?
What does that mean, .01, .02? What does this graph mean? I know that length, I can extrapolate what it means, but...
It is, it's a percentage of dollars spent.
Out of the 45 other communities that are using this.
Still don't understand, I'm sorry.
It's, so out of the other 45 communities, we're spending, well, it shows almost zero. Oh, sorry. We're spending almost zero compared to the other communities that are spending, I don't know, what is that, 10% and 20% in this mandate at a low quartile?
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. But what does, I mean, so zero is off to the left, but zero is also represented by the blue line, right? And we're not spending zero. We're spending 1 million, right?
So I think what this is showing is that even though we're spending a million dollars, we're spending significantly quite a bit less than other communities are.
And so what does that .01 mean? I understand that, I guess what I'm saying is I'm not drawing a correlation between the graph and that conclusion.
So this is saying that other communities are spending 10% of their total budget dollars on quartile three programs within this policy question.
Got it. And then 20% of their budgets on quartile four?
Yes.
And we're not spending any money on quartile four?
And we're not spending that. We're spending less than that.
Got it, that makes sense. Good job. That's a good job graph. Okay, good. Good job, Earl. Jim, good job.
Okay, so the second policy question that was developed by the CPBB is really designed to ask, are we overproviding to our own self-imposed? So while the first one was looking at a mandate of four, this one is looking at that mandate of three. So same, the rest of the settings are all the same. It's just the mandate is now, I'm sorry, the mandate's now at a two, at a two. So this is code or resolutions. Okay, so Melody, why don't you scroll down here? So a snapshot of the dollars that we're spending, 4.9 in quartile three, 1.4 in quartile four, and then how we compare to the average of the other communities using the tool.
Councilmember Peck?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. So this money spent to meet our mandates, what is the tool to decide if we've, are we spending enough? Are we meeting the mandates? If we're, I look at this and I think, why are they spending so much more? Are we actually meeting the mandates?
Well, it looks like we're spending a lot less than the average.
I mean, no, they're spending more.
Yeah.
The other communities, I meant.
And so I guess one of the things that this tool doesn't tell us is, what are their mandates? Are our mandates, because it's our own self-imposed mandates, so it's our code, it's our resolutions. Are their mandates different than ours? That we don't know. That we can't tell from this.
What about the last slide, though, on the federal, county, and state mandates, where we were spending quite a bit less? Is there a tool to tell us if we've met the mandates that were imposed? I'm just looking at how much more they spent, and I'm thinking, did we meet them?
And I guess the other thing that kind of complicates this, too, is what communities is this comparing us to? Because they may not be the full-service community that we are. They may not offer electricity or, you know, water and sewer, and those could be, those could be provided by special districts. So it really, I guess CPBB's point here was not for this to, you know, really be the guiding factor, but for, to raise those types of questions so we can dig a little deeper to figure out those, the answers to those questions.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. And I'm assuming this is just a rounding? It looks like it's just rounding on this graph? So like, we're really on the quartile four, spending 7%, and everybody else, the mean is like 11% or 12%? Because what I'm, I guess what I'm saying is I'm criticizing your, I mean, it's informa, if we're going to have a policy discussion off numbers and colors on a graph without understanding what the program is that we're discussing, I don't understand the graph still. I want clarification on what this means. So if .01 is a little blue, and then .01 is more gray, I want to know, I mean, we can't make any decisions with this. It's, I mean, we could have a policy discussion on, I like the blue and I like the gray, but what does it mean? So...
Mayor Coombs, members of council, I guess, and I just, in general to your questions, I don't think we're, this tool's not going to help us make decisions. It's going to help us look in directions to find answers. So it's going to make us ask more questions about the programs that fall underneath this. But, and more specifically now, I don't know if you guys have an answer to that, but obviously the, yes, they are rounding there, and that's not very useful, but if you look at how far it goes out on the graph, you can see the distinction. If you hover over it, does it give you a dollar figure? No? Okay, all right. Okay.
Did you guys catch what she just said? Sorry. I said it is 10% of all communities' budgets versus 10% of just our own budget, so that could be the difference there.
Oh, okay.
Because the dollars are a lot greater for all communities versus just ours.
10% or 1%?
Should be 10%.
I think that you have to move the decimal to places. My point is, we don't understand the numbers. Sorry.
So I wanted to go back to Councilmember Peck's question in terms of the federal and state mandates. So part of it is, is if we're not meeting those mandates, then we also get, we have other consequences for not meeting those mandates. So if in the state mandates on water quality, if we're not meeting that, then they come in and write us up for not meeting the standards. So in a lot of cases, there are mechanisms in place at those levels to ensure that we meet those standards.
Okay, so the next policy question we wanted to briefly show you is number three. So this one is, are there service-sharing opportunities with other political organizations? So the key here is in the reliance on the city to provide the program. And so what this one is looking at is all those programs that scored a three in reliance on the city to provide the program. And so what a three was is, city is currently the sole provider of the program, but there are other public or private entities that could be contracted to provide a similar service. So let's scroll down and look at that one. So we have quite a few programs here. I think what we saw up above was we have over 500 programs that fall within this predefined They are spread all over from quartile one all the way down to the fourth quartile. There's kind of mixed in terms of how we compare to other organizations. In some cases, we're below, in other cases, we're above. Questions on that one?
You might address the question of what quartile two is, how we're larger in that area there.
How what?
How our numbers are larger in quartile two than others.
And so the, what Jim was saying is, so scroll down just a little bit, how our numbers are larger in quartile two than others. So again, it really is just a comparison to those other entities, and, you know, they may define their programs differently than we do or score them differently than we do. But we are, at least the way the model is developed right now, we are spending more dollars in our quartile two than the rest of the organizations using this.
Councilmember Christensen?
Isn't a lot of this one, however, things like next slide, which could be provided privately, but most of the town would prefer to have us provide it because we do it better, or our trash pickup, which also could be provided privately, but we do a better job of it. And so it's because we actually, as a city, provide more services and well, and we do it well. Thank you.
Exactly. It's, it really is those individual programs that we're providing.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. And then could you also just remind us, or me, the, so there's, we talked about four quartiles in grading, zero, one, two, three, four, et cetera, one through four, at the very beginning of your presentation. Just as we're going through the graph, so when you say, can you go down just a little bit? Nope, up, sorry, up, up. There, select range and reliance, three. If you could remind us just briefly what that, what the three means and what quarter one, two, three, and four means, because there's a lot of different meanings depending on what we're looking at. So can you just remind us?
So the three in the reliance on the city is, city is currently the sole provider of the program, but there are other public or private entities that could be contracted to provide that service.
Okay, and then quartile one?
So quartile one, so the quartiles...
I just need a reminder. I just need a, just a reminder.
Yeah, so the way the programs fall within the quartiles really depends on how they scored overall. So programs in quartile one are our highest-scoring programs, down to quartile four being our lowest-scoring programs.
Got it, okay. Now can we go back, or go down? Sorry. Thank you.
I have a question.
Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. You know, I find it interesting that they call these policy questions, because these are just numbers. These don't show us the programs, so there's really not a policy question to be answered until we know what those programs are. So they're not really questions. They're just numbers that help us question maybe what they mean if we knew what programs they were.
And Mayor Coombs and Councilmember Finley, we do know what programs they are, and we can get to those programs in this tool.
So what I'm saying is, I guess it's not, I guess when I'm politely, we're saying, I'm not getting anything out of this. In a nice way.
So, right.
I know you guys understand what the underlying things are, but I don't understand.
So how I would look at this data, so if you look at quartile two, and you see that we're spending more than most folks when there's other groups that provide that service, because it's in a quartile two, that means that those are really high-priority programs within our organization. Now, if you were to say, let's move that graph down to quartile four, where it's, they're low-priority programs, what that would tell me is we need to really look at what's going on in that quartile, because there are opportunities for others to provide that service, but we're doing a lot of it in-house, and are there opportunities to examine how we're doing that to reduce the cost of those services? But because it's at quartile two, you still want to look at it, but you know those are high-priority projects, and as Councilmember Christensen indicated, it could be, there's some big numbers in terms of, next slide is included in this, isn't it? Yeah. So, and then solid waste, and so there are some big numbers, so that we know big numbers in terms of our operations are included in that one and two.
Mayor Coombs, members of council, we're trying to keep this at a somewhat high level, but if it drove you to some questions and you wanted to see detail, like what programs make this up, then we would sure bring that back to you. These are asking questions that we maybe didn't ask ourselves before, but about 18 months ago, spent a lot of time and effort to put together reports on each one of these different results and the criteria here, and how every program scored against them and gave you all of that data. And, you know, I mean, I don't know if you're saying you got too much then or too little. We didn't get a lot of feedback at that point in time, but I did ask staff not to bring too much detail. We didn't want to bog you down tonight, so...
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. It's the exact opposite. What I'm saying, I guess, I guess what I'm saying is I was here the first time when we talked about it, and so the question now is, now that we're just seeing the numbers, before I was like, it was all good before. I liked it. You guys did work. And now talking, looking at the numbers, I guess I was just confused about, when we're talking about, when you say the word "policy," what I was saying is, we either don't have enough information to make policy decisions, or we already looked at it and I'm good. And so that's, I'm not challenging you to bring forth more data or more information, not at all. On the contrary, what I was saying is, I guess I'm, the question in my mind is, why? Meaning, are you looking for a policy decision from council? Or are you trying to instruct us, because this isn't instructing me and it's not giving me enough information? And so I'm just trying to understand what my job is here. That's it. So, no, you guys are doing awesome, and this is evidence that you guys know what you're doing, but I'm a little lost. And so that's, and I think that's what Councilmember Finley was saying on, what are we supposed to do with the info?
You know, the way I kind of look at this tool is, you would use this tool, like, if you're going to make a decision, like, you know, when we decided to shut down our print shop because printing has gotten cheaper, and there's so many places that can do it more efficiently, then that's one service that's cheaper to do. So you'd use this tool to probably arrive at that, those types of conclusions for certain things like that.
So, right, and so when I was going through the allocation and what we're recommending funding, I was looking at that piece in terms of where does it fall? Is it ranked in the one, two, three, four? And it really comes into play when you have two things competing for funding, and you're looking at one that is in the quartile one versus one in the quartile four. Those all come in in the evaluation of what recommendations we make to fund. I think we're part of this, and if you can scroll up, is, I think part of this is in the Center for Priority-Based Budgeting choosing the word "policy questions," because those are not, we didn't choose to define it that way.
Okay, all right.
They said, here are policy questions that you can look at to help you compare yourself to the other jurisdictions. And I think when you all heard "policy," you go, what are you asking us from a policy perspective?
Exactly right.
We were not asking you anything. What we were saying is, they said, here are these five policy questions that we've put in that allows you to look at your data and compare it against other jurisdictions based on these points.
Councilmember Moore? Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Yeah, here's what I'm getting out of it, you can tell me if I'm right or wrong. This is a tool to point you in a direction to where you could potentially do a better job of providing services. And if things are out of whack with other communities, or way out of whack within the budget, you can identify that particular program through digging down deeper, and then look at that program specifically as to what can we do better here? Is that a right assessment?
That's absolutely it. And the other piece, it's a financial transparency tool. So when folks say, what are you funding in this category for? They can literally go into this, print it out, and see every program that we have that we're funding in quartile four, how many people are associated with the program, so on and so forth. So it's really making more information available to the public. That's the transparency side of the community. It is exactly how you just described it, in terms of how we look at the budgets. And if you see an anomaly, you go, we need to dig into this.
And I would just add too, that I think what we, what we, one of the things we were trying to achieve here is to show you all the tool and all the different components of the tool, before we make it available on our website, and, and as well as the public that may be watching, so that, so that they can, you know, see what, what the tool provides in terms of data.
And so then the policy question for you all comes in, Jim just pointed this out, is, so then we go through this, and let's say we see an anomaly in this, we would then bring this to you and say, okay, we're seeing an anomaly in terms of how we look at our numbers, and here are the policy questions that we are going to present to you all, based on what we're seeing, and are we doing it the way we need to do it? Do we need to change it based on our review of the data?
Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Can't you just change the scoring to get the answer you want?
We're, I will say that, in transparency, that yes, you could change the scoring, but as we went through this, this is why you have the different panels that are composed of different people, to make sure that you keep the integrity of the process. And I will tell you that when they went through this, there were some pretty good, discussions about how people were reviewing that data. But it's a good question, because I mean, that's what someone, I think, from the community could say, is, well, you can just change the scoring. The simple answer is frankly, with any number, that's always a possibility, but you put the processes in place to maintain the integrity of the process.
Okay. Okay, so two more policy questions, we'll just show you really briefly. So number four, so this one is, are there public-private partnership opportunities? So again, we're looking at reliance on the city to provide the program, and so this one is capturing those programs that scored a one or a two. So a one is programs offered by other private businesses, but none are located within the city limits. And a two is programs is only offered by another governmental nonprofit or civic agency. So not quite as many dollars in this one as we saw in the last one, and then how we compare to the other organizations in the tool. Okay, and the final policy question. Do you want me to go through the next one? Okay, so I guess the piece that I wanted to talk about is next steps. So our plan is to make this available on our website. We are in the process of pulling together some information that will explain the process that we went through and how to access the information. Once we have that available, we're going to put this on our website. The way that we're planning on using this on a go-forward basis is, now that we've got the data in the tool, one of the things we need to do is go back and completely cost our total budget. We're going to wait until we get an adopted budget from you all, and then we'll have staff go back and cost out the total 17 budget. What we want to do is, is we want to do that earlier in the process, so that they have, our departments have, that information when we get to then preparing our 2018 budget information. So they will have access to this, they will be able to look up their programs and where they score, and where they fall in the quartiles, so that they can then use that information to prepare their budgets.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. And then when, if I remember correctly, Councilmember Levinson at the time was the person who was kind of the impetus for getting this access to the, or getting the public access to the information, and there was some concern about whether or not it's proprietary and this and that. And I don't have any problem giving it to the public. My only question is, is there a link or some type of way that when you're doing this, that you can go to the underlying data and see what the programs are in the little, okay? Okay, that's it.
And so you're referring to the policy questions specifically?
No, what I mean is like, so if I'm looking at the numbers that you provided, right? And we weren't at council looking at this, but we could get in and play with it, is there a link or a button that we could actually click on to go back and say, of that 4,385, of the 170, the number that I'm looking at now, could you click on that and go and say, of that 107 million, these are all the programs that make up that 107 million?
And so unfortunately, the tool doesn't quite take it to that step, but throughout the tool, depending on where you're at, they've got download summary buttons. So again, you can click on that, and it'll download it to Excel.
You can get it.
Yes.
I think that, then that's a powerful tool. Thank you.
The only area that we're limiting access on the guest side is areas where they can, where the, because of certain buttons that you would push, you have the ability to write and change numbers. And so that's the limiting factor in this.
Yeah, we don't want public uploading data once they edited the Excel spreadsheet.
Right. And I wanted to highlight one piece on this, is, so the big change coming into the next year budget process, so when we were going through this, I was looking at some of the information I had from the scoring last year. All of that scoring is going to be done on the front end, and so it'll be in the system next year as we're going through our budget reviews. And then when we show that to you, it's going to be more, what I would say, more real time? Is the word to use, more real time?
Why don't we take a five-minute break?
Councilmember Peck, do you have a... All right. Let's go.
Hey, Mayor. Members of council. We're now moving into the airport fund briefly. So I'm going to make a few opening comments and give you some information. And then David Slater is going to step up and present you the unfunded needs that we have at the airport. In the council communication that you have for tonight, we made note of that there's a fund statement in the proposed CIP for the airport fund. And it's on page 152 of that document. And that it shows a negative working capital balance beginning in 2019. Unfortunately, this is one of the problems with the timing, the condensed timing of our budget process. And in this case, David did recommend his proposed budget for most of his O and M line items. But at the time that he does that, he does not know or have identified costs for other line items that finance fills in for all of the city. Those include salary and benefits, insurance costs, fleet costs, and administrative transfer fees. So David submits his budget line items in early June. We don't really fill in the rest of those blanks until late July, early August. And then we spend most of our time trying to balance the general fund and the public safety fund or the public improvement fund. So really, we found this problem with the airport fund as we were issuing the proposed CIP. So we got together with David and did deal with this last week. And we do have some changes to the proposed budget that we are going to inform you of tonight and propose to put them in for and give, actually Theresa the copies. Theresa's going to pass out a couple of pages that we are proposing to change. So David's original proposal was to increase contract services from $60,000 in 2016 to $106,000 in 2017. We've reduced that request back down to $68,450 for 2017. And we also did increase a capital request that is for $5,000, but it was coded in the wrong line items, coded in a lease purchase installment line item. So we're increasing that one to $8,700 to meet one of his capital needs for 2017. So the net change that we are doing to the proposed airport fund's budget for 2017 is we're reducing it from the $440,552 total that was in your original proposed budget to the new number that was just passed out to you. It's $406,252. So the airport fund fund statement changes as well. And our projections for the out years and over the next following four years changes. And it eliminates any negative working capital. It ends year five, which is 2021, with a balance of $142,320. So unless you have any questions on that, I'm going to have David step up. And he's going to take you through a slideshow real quick on the unfunded needs at the airport.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. David Slater, Airport Manager for the City of Longmont. There were some issues that came up in discussing the budget needs and everything. And a lot of these adjustments were made simply to keep us from operating in the red, which we never like to do. But even when you have a positive fund balance, that doesn't mean you're always considered what the FAA defines as self-sustaining. Part of the reason that is, is there are other things that could come up that's not anticipated that would take a tremendous amount of funds in order to rectify or correct, to maintain with our grant assurance requirements, to maintain the airport. So on the unfunded one-time cost issues is to have some dollars set back for catastrophic lighting failure contingencies, as well as catastrophic pavement failure contingencies. Most recently, in an inspection, we found that there were deficiencies in meeting the FAA's requirement for runway safety area with some pavement drop-offs exceeding the advisor circular allowable standard. There are numerous and various different pavement repairs at the airport that have distressed pavement that not only causes a risk and liability issue, but also a safety issue in keeping us in compliance as well. The debris removal equipment, the original need was for $15,000. We're going to be able to cover a portion of that, as Mr. Golden mentioned earlier, in the 2017 budget. And then the need for sewer infrastructure on the south side, we do have some money set aside for that already. But in order to get the sewer infrastructure down to where we need it, in order to develop that property and start generating more revenue, we need an additional $120,000. And then the ramp and taxiway cracking joint seal, that's also pavement maintenance. If you don't take care of that, the water gets underneath, destroys your base, and then you have even more issues. The non-standard runway safety area along the edges of the runway, you can see on the picture on the left, a close-up version where the drop-off in several areas along the runway exceed the minimum standards for the FAA's requirements. This is the corner of the runway sign. However, because it is in the runway safety area, those have to be brought up to standard as well and feathered in so that if aircraft does depart from the runway, it doesn't pop a gear or a tire and cause even more damage. The air-filled lighting issues that I mentioned earlier, this is just an example of, not only do we have an ongoing issue that I'll cover in a minute of maintaining the air-filled lighting system, but having an older system where the entire system's not in what we call cans and conduit where it's protected, you start having a lot more cost in maintaining not only the cost of electricity because the regulators are working overtime, but there's just so much more decay and a quicker decay when it's not in that conduit system. And so upgrading that and maintaining that becomes a greater cost as time goes on. Mentioned earlier about pavement repairs and maintenance, this is just some of the examples of things that we don't have the funds to do. In order to keep the airport's budget in check, we've had to reduce the maintenance cost. And that's why we need to look at how we generate revenue and address the shortfalls that we have in the budget so that we can address areas like this. I spent about $13,000 last year. Part of it was crack seal, but the other, a good significant portion of it, maybe about $10,000 of it, was to repair maybe two areas the size of this. And that was close to $10,000. And speaking of the ongoing annual cost, in addition to those one-time costs, pavement maintenance, you need to be spending at an airport at least to get it up to the standards because over time, this airport has just decayed. And you have to maintain that pavement in good condition all the time, or else it just exponentially gets worse. Same thing with the lighting maintenance. I showed you a picture earlier of just the ongoing maintenance of whether it's an accidental hit by a bush hog or snow removal, or it could be just an aircraft that had departed the runway for whatever reason. Maybe they had a blowout. But those lighting fixtures do get broken, and they do have to be maintained and replaced over time. The vehicle service road maintenance, if it isn't paved in a capital-type project, the continuous upkeep is estimated to cost about $2,500 a year just to keep it graded. So you have an ongoing annual cost total of $24,000. These are some more examples of pavement failures that you see if you don't maintain that and keep the joints sealed and the cracks taken care of. What happens is the water gets down on the base, the base starts to fail, and then the repair costs go up exponentially as things like this occur. Some of this, we do have taken care of in an existing grant, but those grant funds are slim. But when we do it, for instance, the runway rehabilitation, our match to that would be $200,000. So the reason that you see that ending working capital, that fund balance at the end of that sheet that you were passed out, is so that we can try to save up money and get our fund balance to where we can meet those grant matches. There are other examples for the runway extension. Our share would be $275,000. A new air-filled lighting system, our share 42. And as you look down, I won't read them all off to you, but our grant match total is $612,250 of what we need currently. Here's where it gets interesting. So what this means, CIP needs where no grant funds are available. So even if a project is eligible for grant funding, it doesn't mean that you're going to get that in the timeframe that you need it to be accomplished, if at all, simply because of the way the FAA prioritizes their fundings. There's basically three pots of money that the FAA works with. They work with discretionary funding, which is, you compete for nationwide. Only 20%, of the total discretionary funds goes to general aviation airports. Then the second pot is state apportionment funds. Although it's federal funds, it's basically a portion based off of a formula for the population of the state and the airport needs within that state. So FAA gives CDOT a lot of say where that goes. And they are currently using a program to where they use the majority of that $5 million, this apportion to the state, to do one runway rehabilitation a year. And then there's the non-primary entitlements that we receive $150,000 each year. And you can save that money up, or you can spend it every year, but you're not going to do much of a project with $150,000. And that doesn't count our 5% match. That goes towards the project. So there's a couple of different ways you can use that non-primary entitlement. One way is to either save it up, or that you can borrow from an airport that won't be using it that year, do your project, and then pay it back out of your entitlement next year for when they need it. But those are the basic three pots of money. But because the state apportionment's pretty much gone, you don't have much competition nationwide. You might have some competition with the safety area items. But for expansion, runway extension, any kind of what they consider a capacity increase, you're not going to compete for that discretionary, particularly with $150,000. The FAA is going to tell you, you need to save up some money and then come back and try to compete with a little bit more money. So the more money we build up, the better we can compete for that discretionary funds. But your CIP needs total is $3.3, $3.4 million. Talked a little bit about the vehicle service road. As you can see, it's in pretty bad shape. And it, that $2,500 a year is just grading the road and making sure that it doesn't completely destroy the vehicles that'll be using it, whether it's people movers, or fuel trucks, or airport operations vehicles. You're going to cause more damage and cost you more money in the long run if you don't maintain those areas. The purpose for the vehicle service road is to make sure that people stay off of the runway and eliminate risk and safety issues with runway crossings. And this would allow people to traverse from the south side to the north side and vice So I went over the funding a little bit earlier and how the state does one runway a year for the state apportionment, which only leaves the non-primary entitlements and discretionary funds. The discretionary has the 80-20 split, 20% for GA, and it competes nationwide. They do safety areas first and then move out to capacity increases from there. Discretionary funds, again, capacity increase comes very last when they're considering any project, and it doesn't compete very well. The timing of the funds, the runway rehabilitation for us here at Longmont is programmed about five years out. The runway extension is currently programmed at about 11 years out. Keep in mind that could change depending upon additional funds that we would have, meaning greater than our normal 5% match. However, again, with our 5% match being some $250,000, we have to make sure that our fund balance keeps up with that so that when we get to that point, we can actually meet our match requirement in order to get the project. And then I'm open to any questions that y'all might have of what I covered. I didn't want to take too much of your time. I know you've been here a while already.
I don't see any questions. Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I guess my only question is, for the unfunded portion of the CIP stuff, okay, you've got five and 11 kind of is our goal as far as runway rehabilitation and extension go. Everything else with the airport fund, how does that money typically pop up? Meaning, I mean, if we don't plan for it, if we don't budget for it, and it just remains on the CIP unfunded, I mean, is there any discussion ever about, well, let's focus on this year? Or let's do, or does it just kind of stay there in the perpetual, we ain't got no money, but this needs to be done?
It's really that. So I mean, if you remember the conversation that we had regarding the golf fund and the issues there, I indicated in that budget presentation that we essentially have the same thing in the airport fund. And so when you look at the revenues coming in and you look at the operational costs, you just don't have that capacity to do it. So what it tells us is how do you get to the point where you can fund that? And it is by increasing revenues. And how do you increase revenues, the lease rates, which then means that we have to, and this is the conversations that we're going through right now, is how do you look at what is the most developable area of the airport? And it's the south side. And so in order to take us to the point where you're generating the revenues to do that, you really need to see the development of the south side of the airport.
Councilmember Christensen.
Is this considered an enterprise fund?
Yes, it is.
It is, okay. So I know I keep asking this question, but do we get different fees from commercial places at the airport than we do from regular hangars, you know, recreational pilots who just have planes out there and are not making money off the airport?
I'm sorry, Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Christensen. So as far as the ground lease rates, we do not currently have a different rate schedule for commercial operators as we do anyone else. However, when we start having development on the south side where we can have a differentiation between prime location, developed, more developed areas or areas that are going to cost less to develop, then we can look at changing that. And it would take a change by the council as far as how we charge people because currently it's in across the board. And historically, that's just to prevent any kind of unjust discrimination claims. Just the way it's been set up historically has always been across the board for whoever leases property there.
But that doesn't make sense to me because, you know, the people who have commercial businesses out there are actually making money because the taxpayers are helping fund this. And the other people who just have, I don't know, not dismissing it as hobbyists, but they're not making money off of it. And so they're actually subsidizing commercial entities out there. And that, it doesn't seem, I mean, that's one way we could certainly make a little bit more money at the airport. We got in our packet last week or something, we make $48,000 from the paddleboard operation at Union Lake, which is only three months out of the year. And yet the skydive operation is $32,000 a year. That doesn't, they operate year-round, every day, day and night, whenever they feel like. And it doesn't seem fair to the paddleboat guys. We should, you know, I'm just saying, we should be consistent. The paddleboat operators pay more out at Union Lake than people who just have a kayak. And I just think our city should be consistent.
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Christensen, thanks for those comments. And I can definitely see the philosophy behind that, and I don't disagree with it. The thing that we have to consider with regards to the airport is if I can come up with a justifiable difference for this piece of property being more valuable for this piece of property, I can justify it that way. I just can't justify it charging a different rate for a commercial operator versus a hobbyist on that principle alone. Now, you can have differences in rates between different types of operators, FBOs. If you have an FBO or fixed-based operator that services strictly jets, and then another one that services only piston aircraft, and there's a higher level of service, then there can be a different rate associated with that. So it just has to be basically kosher with the FAA and the methodology that we use. So I think it's definitely something that we can discuss and bring back to council as far as how you would like to see things done.
Councilmember Peck.
Thank you. David, just out of curiosity, is there a different square foot rate for non, well, for commercial entities? For example, if someone wants to make drones, but they're not actually using the runway, they're not using the airport facilities, is there a regular commercial rate for that? Or if somebody, I heard that there was a woman who wanted to do, lease a portion of the airport for photography, for wedding venues. Would her land lease rate, square foot rate, be different than a hangar rate?
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Peck. Yes, ma'am. So there's a difference between aeronautical rates and non-aeronautical rates. The FAA has us charge the fair market value for property outside the airport for non-aeronautical businesses a non-aeronautical rate. So for instance, a wedding planning venue type operation would be considered non-aeronautical. So they would pay what the fair market rate is. So as a comparison, when we did the rate schedule, the aeronautical rate was .3527 cents per square foot, whereas the fair market value for non-aeronautical property would be $1.11 per square foot.
That's quite a bit more.
Yes, ma'am.
So do we have very many non-aeronautical entities out there?
No, ma'am. I can't think of any that would be considered non-aeronautical that's currently operating at this time.
Okay. Thank you.
So Mayor, I want to go back to Councilmember Christensen's question about the rates. So in general, when you're setting your rate structures, and so let's take the south side of the airport in terms of how we would develop it. You can charge a premium for the parcels that have primary access to the taxiways based on their positions and things like that. So you start off with a base land lease rate. Then you take the access issues, and you can charge a premium for that. Then if you come in and you provide the infrastructure for water, wastewater, electricity, and those types of things, then you can add that to the cost of the land. But it has to be consistent. So if you had two primary spots on the front of the taxiway, and one was occupied by just a standard hangar owner, and one was occupied by a commercial user, those rates have to be consistent based on that structure. You can't distinguish those two under the grant assurances. And so it's really based on the amenities that you have and what you're able to use on that particular parcel of land. And that's why we were saying that when we look at the south side of the airport in terms of the long-term revenue generation, providing that infrastructure into that area allows us to charge higher lease rates that generates more revenue for the airport.
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. And just to throw out just maybe a differing voice on the commercial potential for increasing and charging more for commercial. and charging more for commercial, I, I think it's a mistake, I understand rightfully so, why some members of council and the community are upset with mile-high skydiving, but there's a, you have to charge everyone commercially the same. And so, and so, and so, just because mile-high skydiving might earn some money, doesn't necessarily mean that the, the SR, what, SRSO, what is it? What's the abbreviation, the new one?
SASO.
SASO. So, if someone's, you know, uh, doing, fixing planes out of their hangar out there, you know, they're, I have yet to be out there and ever see anybody driving around, driving around in a Maserati or a Ferrari. Most of these guys are in beat-up Subarus and, uh, you know, they're, they're not rich by any means. So, and they also, and even though it's, the airport's subsidized by the taxpayer, you know, you, you, if you increase commercial leases out there because of one tenant that has proven to be problematic, you impact a bigger group, and then all of a sudden, you've got less people servicing the airplanes, and the airport continues to decrease in, in those kind of pictures that we saw. And so, just, I guess I'm only saying that because as you heard some council members bring up, well, let's go ahead and look at, I, I think that it's not as easy as just, oh, well, a council member or two said, ah, we should need to look at increasing the commercial rates. I just wanted to add my voice in that it's not a council directive yet, and that would need to be discussed and, and debated, and look at the consequences.
You know, I kind of think we're getting a little bit off-base here, and should just try to stick to the budget issues. Uh, Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. So, David, what are you saying here? You got, you threw a bunch of numbers up there, it says we need a lot more money. What, what, do you have a proposal?
Uh, Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Moore, I've had, uh, discussions with city management and finance, and, um, I, I believe any recommendation, it would, it would need to come from them. Um, my sole purpose here is to present you with information of what we have on unfunded needs, keeping in mind that the, the deficiencies that we're looking at and basically how we're, we're lining out our, our outlook for future budget is doing without the maintenance numbers, ongoing maintenance numbers, or any other kind of one-time fees, just to try to keep the balance to the budget. So, um, beyond that, I would, I would have to leave any recommendation to city manager's office.
Okay. Um, so it says, line item budget line 233, facility repair and maintenance, $3,000 for 2017. And I think when your prior slide said something like $24,000 is needed, is that, do I remember that correctly?
Uh, Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Moore, yes, sir. That's, that's correct. I believe it's around $24,000, uh, for ongoing maintenance that, that we were looking at.
There's like potholes and light fixtures and that kind of stuff?
That, and that is in addition to the existing contracts that we already have, such as mowing, snow removal, uh, maintenance of our weather station, um, making sure the restrooms are in good working order. Um, that's in addition to those, those funds that we already spend on that.
So, we talked a little bit about this with the golf fund and how the maintenance has been deferred, and how we've ended up in a situation where we have, we're not going to be able to pay for it through the golf fund? Is that where we're at with the airport, do you think?
Uh, Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Moore, um, if you're asking my opinion, yes, sir. I think that's where we're at. I think up until this, to this point, and what you see on, on, on the numbers on the paper, um, are representative of the airport technically, um, and numerically being self-sustaining. But if you have a catastrophic event, and if you are truly maintaining the airport in compliance with the grant assurances, that would set you into the red. Um, so, that, that is definitely where we're at, in my opinion.
I think I heard you two say that you had some reserves set, setback, set aside in certain categories, but not enough. I'm, I'm looking at to you as the airport manager, saying, what are your recommendations?
Uh, Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Moore, my recommendation is, at least for the foreseeable future, starting, um, and, and this is partly based on my, my meetings with city manager and, and finance director, um, and starting in 2018, to have a reduction in what the airport fund pays into those administrative and management fees. It is taking a significant hit on the budget. Um, the, the reason that you currently see a, a fund balance is because we're trying to maintain that to get to the point to where we can actually afford the grants that we get from the federal government that would help us maintain it better. Um, but for those catastrophic events, um, we would never meet those goals if we didn't have a reduction. Um, I know previously there, there was mention, um, I believe in 2009, and there was a 25% collection on the fund, uh, and then I think in 2011, it was 35%. And I don't recall what year it went to 100%.
It was 2011?
2011.
So, that's the line 270, it says 173,755.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Out of the $400,000 budget.
Yeah. All right. Well, that's about all I could beat you up for tonight.
Councilmember Peck?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Um, just for clarification, when I was talking about commercial, um, and raising the fees on the lease, it was for non-aeronautical. So, just, so you know. Um, and the other thing, David, at what point on these unfunded, uh, improvement projects are they going to become dangerous if, if we don't, uh, look at them immediately?
Uh, Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Peck, so, for instance, on, if you go to, um, for instance, the, this is the programs that we have currently out there that, that we're looking into the future, um, trying to get enough money to save, saved up to, to accomplish those. Things that pop up are things like the runway safety area issues.
Right.
Um, uh, during one of the inspections, there was also, uh, note of the peck ditch that runs across the end of the runway. About 25 to 30 feet of that actually crosses the end of the runway safety area. So, we need to make plans to have that, a portion of that relocated outside the safety area that, and that doesn't, uh, account for all the additional runway safety area items that we've, we've been, for lack of a better term, dinged on by the FAA's inspection of, of the safety areas.
Okay. Should we, and I know that you have a reserve fund, but it's really very small, should we, in the budget planning, um, put more money into that reserve fund? Should that be part of our process? This looks like it, it's pretty important.
Mayor Coombs, members of council, I, I, you know, where is the money coming from is really the question.
Right.
Sure, we, we need to have more money. I think we're pointing that out left and right here tonight. So, I guess to answer to your question, sure, we should put more away, but where is that going to come from? I think the only viable option that, that we've brought to you tonight, and I'm sorry, I skipped over it, but David did mention the administrative transfer fee. Uh, we did have it down to 25% recovery in, in, uh, up to 2011. That could be consideration. But even at that rate, that doesn't take care of the, of the full unfunded CIP projects. You know, you're talking probably about $120,000 a year or so. So, um, same as we discussed with golf, it just was, uh, never suggested before that, that, that these type of CIP projects be funded by, uh, the Public Improvement Fund, but it's, it's, the other way to look at it is you, you roll it into the same type of, um, improvements type of bond. But, you know, that changes, changes the numbers on all that, but it's a consideration to think of going forward. Um, so, we, we did want to bring that up to you. We do think the ATF is going to go down somewhat in future years, but certainly not significantly. But there's been, uh, we think last year was a peak year, and it's reflected in the ATF for 2017. And I think we pointed out in the council communication, a lot of it's not support service type, type services that are being charged there so much as it is city attorneys, city managers, city council. These are services that we do charge out to all of our enterprise funds, uh, and, uh, it is based on your work, your agendas and such.
I don't see any other questions from councils?
So, I think the two, the two recommendations to answer the question is, is do we want to look at the ATF? And do we want to consider this as part of the public improvement funding to do some of these projects in dealing with this? I mean, if you could add the 120,000, what I would say is it needs to be for a defined period of time. I mean, it's not something that we can continue in perpetuity, but in enough time where what you would like to see is how do you generate the, the revenue necessary to, to work to develop the infrastructure on the south side? Now, there's also ways that we can look at that infrastructure on the south side and potentially partnering with someone who's wanting to put something out on the location to where they can put the infrastructure in. And then, the FAA does allow you to offset the lease rates based on their capital investment in particular areas. So, that, that's a third option that we could look at, but you need someone that's willing to do that. And, and in reality, it's probably going to take a combination of all three of those pieces. But I think the point that really needs to be made when you look at the golf fund and you look at the airport fund, you have two very small funds, um, when we look at them in relation to the other enterprise funds that we have in the organization, that in both cases are covering, and I use that term loosely, their operational expenses. But there's no way that they can generate the dollars they need for those significant capital expenditures. And, and so, again, different options, and it's also going to take us to come in and look at this. But these are two, two issues that, you know, this, when infrastructure starts getting to this point, um, it, it just starts compounding.
If there are no other questions related to the airport, Mayor, I'm going to move on.
Yep.
So, I actually do have a couple, sorry. So, I haven't heard anything from council on this. So, we talked about looking at the ATF. Is there interest from council in us bringing that back as a conversation? And again, not for 2017, but for 2018.
Sure, the ATF.
ATF fee. It used to be 25%.
I kind of think we should because, you know, if we can save up a little bit, then we get these matching grants. I mean, to get the 50% match, we need to have our own skin in the game. So, I, I, I think, you know, one way to do that is reduce that ATF.
Second question, is there interest from council in us looking at some of these and bringing them in to the Public Improvement Fund? Conversation from the bonding piece.
Yeah.
Okay.
Then we will move on from the airport fund. So, we do have a number of other unfunded needs we wanted to cover tonight. We have a lot of staff here in the audience that will be involved in the presentations. I'm going to give a quick overview and introduction, and then turn it over to some department heads who will, uh, lead their presentations. As I put in the council communication, we do have some, uh, major needs that are unfunded, and we wanted to bring them all to your attention tonight. Uh, the, um, I've talked about in past few weeks, things like the budget reset, still remaining of $300,000. We also have, uh, we have, council has a goal of trying to get a million dollars a year towards affordable housing funding. So, we're about $460,000 per year short of that. And, uh, we also talked about, uh, trying to budget employee pay to 102% in future budgets, uh, 102% of market. Um, that would cost about $490,000 to the general fund, and total citywide, about $970,000. So, uh, a lot of information, I think I put into the communication on some detail. We're going to try not to get too detailed here tonight. We have overall rolling up, we have, uh, 25 and a half unfunded FTE requests between the general fund and the public improvement fu, I mean, the public safety fund. That's almost $2 million of salary and benefit costs by itself. We had, uh, $866,000 of unfunded Level 2 requests in those two funds. And then, we also have, uh, almost $3 million in one-time expenses that were unfunded in the general fund and, and the public safety fund. So, you're probably going to hear some reference to some of those type of expenses here over the next, uh, few hour and a half or so of presentations, hopefully. But I'm going to turn it over to Chief Butler now.
Thanks, Jim. Um, good evening, Mayor, members of council. Mike Butler, Public Safety Chief. Uh, thanks for this opportunity. I do want to reconstruct just a little bit of history here. Um, 10 years ago, Public Safety stood up in front of our council and basically gave council a set of needs, um, that council determined that we needed to go to the community and ask whether or not we needed to fund those needs. And that, in fact, had happened. We ended up with our public safety fund with a, um, funded by a public safety tax. Um, I guess the short and sweet of this is, um, we were able to get almost all of the positions that we needed out of that public safety fund, but not quite. Uh, we weren't able to fund approximately seven of those police positions. And, and so, we have not gotten any police officers in the last 10 years, um, uh, within Longmont. And, and so, and Longmont has grown up a lot. We've turned into a different kind of community. Um, we're, we're no longer a small town or a large town. We are a mid-sized city with mid-sized city kinds of, of, um, attributes. Um, I, I will sit here and say also that this is not necessarily a serious crime issue. Crime has more or less stayed flat for the last several years in our community. But we have other issues that we've been confronting that take up and eat a tremendous amount of our resources. Issues like folks struggling with homelessness, folks struggling with addiction, folks struggling with mental health, folks struggling with poverty. Fire and police end up responding to a number of those symptoms, symptoms of those issues. And so, that's what we have seen a tremendous increase in, in terms of the things that we are responding to, uh, we, and on an ongoing basis. And so, for us, we're, we've reached a major saturation point within public safety, and we're starting to, we're starting to see people, um, burn out, we're starting to see people, um, I mean, it, it's become a safety issue for us at this point. You're going to hear a couple of people here talk tonight about, and, and for us, the big issue for us is safety of our personnel. Um, that's going to be the number one driver in terms of why we need more resources. The other one, maybe not as important, but somewhat important, is the workload issue that we're confronting. And so, you're going to hear Jeff Satter, you're going to hear Jared Van Landingham, you're going to hear Dan Eamon, and you're going to hear Paul Zubert talk a little bit about their areas very briefly in terms of what those things look like. So, the other thing that we are confronting, uh, is we are confronting, um, uh, issues on the order of, um, records management systems that are quite expensive, that are outdated. And we're trying to put a plan in place to be able to fund those, but those are not inexpensive systems. Both systems for fire and police could run up to about a million dollars in one-time expenses. So, um, you know, the other thing that I do want to say, in the, in the last 10 years, in 2008, I think we started off with about 142 officers. Well, we all know what happened, the great recession occurred, um, in 2008, 2009. And so, since then, not only did we not get seven of those positions funded, and I want to put a caveat on that, we've had some dispatchers recently funded over the last three or four budget cycles. But we also lost in that period of time, five police officers. And so, we are, we are well short of where we should have been 10 years ago, let alone where we should be today. And so, what you're going to hear about tonight is what we need to do to catch up to 2016 and 2017. And so, I'm going to, uh, end my introductory remarks with that, and I'm going to turn it over to Deputy Chief Satter, who oversees our Police Services Division.
Hello, Mayor and council. Thank you, uh, for your time tonight. I have about 200 slides.
Yes, thanks. I'm just kidding.
So, uh, this is our staffing study, and our police department request for staffing. Uh, this was collected from data from between 2009, 2015, uh, by Dr. Elise Fleischer. Uh, we did a lot of research in 2016, uh, to gather some of the data, but most of the data is, is up to 2015. Um, as you know, uh, in 19, in 2008, our population was approximately 86,000. At that time, we had 142 officers in our department. Uh, 2016, we're approaching population of 94,000, and, uh, you'll see on the lower chart that we're at 137 officers. As, uh, Chief Butler explained, uh, because of the recession, we lost positions, uh, in 2009. Um, the, uh, numbers in the red are, are patrol staffing. So, uh, we started at 59, climbed to a high of 67. Right now, we're Right now, we're at 63 officers assigned to patrol. And then, the, the numbers, 10, 11, 11, 12, 12, those are sergeants' positions in our patrol division. We have sergeants in every division, but primarily, we're focusing on detectives and officers in our patrol division. So, this was from the 2008 annual report. And again, I've got the same chart up there, but while the nation braced for the fallout of the recession, the Longmont Police Department was somewhat fortunate not to lose considerable staffing and will continue on a path to provide the best service to our community. Many of the positions and upgrades that were slated for 2009 were frozen, and we have pretty much been in a holding pattern since 2009. These cuts were consisted of two vacant positions and positions slated for hire. And it was uncertain how these, the recession was going to continue. And since 2009, 2010, we've been at 137 officers in our police department. 2013, we reorganized. We eliminated some positions in patrol. We eliminated a beat support team, combined them into a gang, into our gang, crime-free multi-housing, and sent some positions back to our patrol division. In 2014, we were six officers down due to injuries. I've got another chart coming up on that. And in 2016, we moved the patrol officer position to detectives. We're just treading water right now in detectives, but it's, it's had an impact on the growing cases that are happening in our community. And I've got more details on that coming up. So, just a quick comparison with some other cities. Longmont's over on the left. This is just patrols, patrol officers and detectives. So, as you can see, we have 63 in patrol, 17 detectives. Boulder, 84 assigned to patrol, 22 assigned to detectives. Fort Collins, 102 assigned to patrol, 27 in detectives. Thornton, Colorado, 142 officers, 23 in detectives. Their populations are a little higher, but as you can see, they have a lot more resources in both patrol and the detective division. So this is what we asked for in this year's budget. We asked for seven patrol officers, one detective, one detective sergeant, a communication specialist or dispatcher, one armor. We have approximately 400 weapons to maintain in our police department, from pistols to shotguns to rifles to less lethal. A CSO, we asked for two CSO investigators. We asked for one animal control investigator, a detective CSO to do our sex offenders. We have approximately 250 sex offenders in our community that we have to register, track, and maintain knowledge of where they live. A crime scene investigator, and then a special events coordinator. Right now, we have a sergeant assigned to that. Approximately 30% of our, his time is spent preparing for special events, you know, the big parades, the big festivals, things like that. Takes a lot of manpower, but we want them to go safe. We work very closely with our fire department on that, but, you know, planning helps keep events safe. And then, if we did go to a camera system for our officers, we know that we would need somebody in property evidence to manage all the videos, review the videos for redaction if people make requests for videos. So it'd be another position just to maintain the videos. Just, yes, sir.
Jeff, can you tell me what CSO means?
Yes, Community Service Officer. So they're a civilian police officer position. They're not armed. They carry tasers and pepper spray, but they're unarmed and they take accidents and do some of the lower level investigations.
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. And so, this is, these are 19 positions. How many full-time employees does this represent?
All of them. Except for, yeah, all full-time.
So we would be adding 19 FTEs to the budget?
Yes.
And then, we haven't increased at all? You're saying that we haven't increased in general for 10 years?
The only positions we've added have been to communications. I think we've added two or three communication, telecommunications specialists, and I think a technician. And, but Paul Zubor will give you a little bit more information about that, too.
Thanks.
So, just on a side note, way up here.
With the exception of this year, this year, we are putting in five positions for patrol officers.
Thank you. That's, yeah, that's recommended for funding of five patrol officers. No, that would take away from the 19.
So 12 extra.
So when we, when, so we had a longer version of this presentation in our budget. We looked at the seven patrol officers, of the seven patrol officers in the recommended budget that we presented to you, we're funding five. So, that's two of those positions that are unfunded.
Yeah, go ahead.
So this is coming under, again, it's my, my problem digesting everything. So this is being presented in the context of unfunded mandates?
This is being presented in terms of...
Not unfunded mandates, but just...
It's, it's what, you know, our, our budget, the revenues can only afford what we're, what we recommended for funding. And, but actually, our, what we, what's being presented as funding, our recommendations for funding included all of these positions as well. Minus five patrol officers.
This is in the budget?
No, it's not.
Only five are in the budget?
Out of all of that, only five positions are in the budget, 14 or not.
Okay, so it is an unfunded budgetary item.
So, so what we talked to council about during the last session is we said, typically what you've seen in the budget process is here's what we're recommending to you all to be funded. As we started going through this after a couple of years, it's, we really need to talk about what we're not funding as we're presenting the budgets to you all so you get a sense of where the gaps are being created and what we're having to do.
Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. What is our public safety tax? What does that amount at this time?
The percentage is .325. I may need Jim to, or Teresa to talk about how many dollars that produces annually.
Well, clearly, it's not enough. And I know that we have a lot to go through, a lot more presentation, and I'm eager to hear it all. But bottom line for me is, I really think we, and I've thought this for some time, we need to increase that public safety tax because we're not meeting the needs.
So, Mayor, that generates, I believe, 6.4 million is what we have in the budget projected for, for next year.
No.
All right. So...
Councilmember Becca.
Sorry. Out of that 6.4 million, how much will that fund of this? Or it funds everything but this?
It's just funding two, two police officers that have been added in the public safety fund for 2017.
Okay, thank you.
And, and for clarification, too, the other three are coming from the general fund.
Oh, okay, thanks.
The, the public safety fund provides about one-seventh of the total funding for public safety department in general. So it's about a six to one differential between what the general fund provides compared to the public safety fund.
With these positions, I just want to point out that on average, it takes about 15 months to hire and train a police officer or a communication specialist before they're on the street working solo or on a console working solo. So, positions that we hire now, we have people in the process. If we hire them in January 2017, we will not see them on the street as a solo position or on a computer console until September, October of 2017. So we're about 15 months to get these people up and running. So we're, we try to project ahead of our needs if that... Another thing that hits us hard is our admin loss. This includes training, family leave, alternative duty due to injuries, injury leave, range instruction, hiring process, bereavement leave. We did a five-year study, and at that time, on average, we're down five officers, full-time positions, most of the year. These categories do not include vacation, comp, sick leave, special assignments. It's just alternative duty type work.
And what council may remember, in the last couple of budgets, we had to really hit the overtime categories with additional funding because we were seeing that, actually, they were spending over what was budgeted in the overtime category. So, in the last, last budget cycle, we put in approximately half a million?
300,000.
300,000. 380,000 in the overtime budgets to manage, to manage that piece of it.
And I've got some slides coming up on, you know, just the injuries. We're in a fairly risky business, and a simple arrest, wrestling with a suspect can result in a torn thumb, a torn knee, torn shoulder, and, and it puts our officers out for months and months at a time. And that, and they can't work their primary assignment. So it takes about five officers to fill one shift 24 hours a day, minimum staffing days. We generally have about eight officers on day shift. We have 10 officers on swing shift and eight officers on graveyards. And then, we generally have one or two sergeants working per shift.
And I just want to make that point real clear. You know, on a normal eight-to-five, Monday through Friday job, you need one person to fill a position for that position. But in a 168-hour work assignment, which is how many hours are in a week, you need 5.1 people to have one person for the entire time. So just make that clear.
So, this is a, just a quick photo of the schedule. The yellow are vacation. The greens are alternative duty or light duty. The, or the S's are sick. And then, all the red at the bottom are days that we are below minimum staffing for that shift. So we have to post overtime for that shift to cover those times. And you can see, some of the days were three down, four down, two down. So there, there's a lot of shifts to cover in a month. Our calls for service, on average, our police department responds to about 86,000 calls for service a year. As you can see by these three charts, I have 2013, 14, and 15. And you can see that, on average, we're growing about 70 calls per month over the year. And you can see we're, during the summers, we're well over 8,500 calls, calls a month.
And, and what that boils down to is about 235 to 250 calls per day for the police department in terms of what patrol responds to.
Our dispatch center, communication center fields about 173,000 calls. They take a lot of phone calls. Each officer handles about 9.2 calls per day, per shift. On average, priority one calls, which are officer calls that require two or more officers, right now, from a safety point, our officers are waiting about 2.8 minutes before their cover arrives. A priority one call is an in-progress criminal event or a medical emergency type call.
And I know Jeff is going to do a little bit more of work on this, but that 2.8 minutes is a, is a major safety issue for us. In terms of having one officer on a call that requires two officers, a lot of things can happen during that time. And you may remember an incident that occurred last year where we honored people from the community and some Walmart employees for helping out an officer because backup couldn't make it in time. And so, that happens, and in our opinion, it happens way too much.
So in 2015, we, we responded to approximately 12,000 priority one calls for service. I'm not going to go through every call, but I broke these out. And these are, again, requiring at least two officers. As you can see in your, your chart there, they're color-coded for you, but this is shortly after midnight on January 1st. So our first call for, we had five officers go to disturbance shortly thereafter, three officers to a disturbance, two officers, three officers, three officers, five officers. So, and this just goes on and on and on. This injury accident, you know, there's probably 12 officers there. Just, and I won't go, this, this chart goes all the way down to the end of the year. It's 36,000 events. And the last call of the year, we had 12 officers on a domestic disturbance.
I also want to say, I know sometimes that can look like, well, how many, why do you need so many officers there? But we're pretty good at that level of discipline and ensuring, but there are just some instances where there's just a lot of people, where there's a lot of traffic direction that has to take place, there's a lot of safety issues, there's crime scenes that have to be protected. And there's just a lot of criteria that we have to fill to ensure that things are safe, things are done right, and that things are done in a quality way that this community, the courts, the criminal justice system, all demand. And so, but what we do focus on is, we focus on as much ensuring that we have that kind of call discipline, that we're not overloading and overkilling these calls, so to speak. So that may look like a lot, but if we go back and dissect and do an anatomy of those, you would find that there's probably the right kind of number to have those calls.
This is a example of how, I won't play the whole thing for two minutes, but these were officers, four officers on a domestic violence arrest. The suspect was about 150 pounds. And I'll just give you a brief how long this can be. And this is four officers trying to control one violent individual.
Get on the ground! Get on the ground! Stop, stop! Get down! Hey! Stop! Stop! Get down! Hey! Stop! 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 Stop!
street. These were officers that responded from everywhere, from all aspects of the department. And so, I think we probably, at that time, had eight to 10 patrol officers. And everybody else came from another assignment.
Our gang unit, our narcotics unit, our detective division. We had a lot of people tied up. So, you know, after a big event like that, our day doesn't stop. So, for the next five hours, our patrol division responded to another 18 priority-one calls. And so, we're constantly shuffling our patrol officers with our gang unit. And so, we're always supporting each other, but it's a constant shuffle of officers. And that's what results in that 2.8-minute delay sometimes. We'll get people there, but that's what relates in that delay, is because we got people tied up on calls all over the city. We did a detective study in 2014. Cases are getting more complex. The Dineal Lane case as an example, which was the Michelle Wilkins baby case. In that case, our investigators had hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of hours just in preparation for court. It was successful. I mean, she's serving 100 years, but it takes a lot to prepare a case for court. Sex assaults, domestic violence, child abuse, death investigations are probably the big cases that we work on a regular basis in detectives. This is an example, five months. These are all child sex cases that came in over five months. All these cases have to be investigated by a detective and an officer. It starts with an officer. And all these cases can grow, because if you can see on the side, suspects are neighbors, siblings, cousins, uncles. And so, these cases grow sometimes exponentially. And they're very, very difficult cases for our detectives to investigate. They break their hearts. It just breaks their hearts. With that, these cases are very complex. They require a lot of work with DNA. They require a lot of work with forensics and the computers. And they take a lot of work in just preparation for court. Stan Garnett estimated that in 2015, 16, they're going to average about 60 trials. A trial can range from a week to three weeks. So, that ties up a detective during that time. And it's more administrative loss for a detective or an officer.
The requirements by the criminal justice system in terms of what they need from police and detectives has grown dramatically with the growth of technology, the growth of science, the changes in case law, requirements by the courts, the judges, the juries. And so, that always increases. And it increases our workload as well. And by the way, the Elkhorns that Stan Garnett are holding are not from Longmont. They're another case, from another city.
Abel Luhon was a cold case. And when I put that in here, that was a trial from 2015. But this is, the files on the right are the detective's case file for that investigation. It includes interviews, photographs, et cetera. The kidnapping case, this individual met this girl on a Dixie, hollow pixie website, solicited the girl, solicited many other girls in that site. The big number to note is that number in the circle at the top. Those were his Facebook records. There were 66,000 documents that our detective had to go through. And that takes a long time to go through all that. And that's how we identified other victims in this case. And this person's doing 50 to 70 years. I don't remember exactly. He got an indeterminate sentence. We do have about 14 detectives that are on call, 16 with our forensics detectives. We are seeing an increase in sex assault cases, child abuse cases, and domestic violence. And a lot of that is because of our outreach in the schools.
Yeah. And that's an important, it may not have much to do with, it's a peripheral issue in terms of staffing, but we've done a lot of focus in our community in terms of ensuring that people who are victims of domestic violence or victims of sex assault or child molestation, that they feel comfortable, they feel safe, and they believe that we're accessible and that we're going to help them. These are very, very nationwide under-reported crimes. And so, part of our success, as we see it, is if we can get more people to report these. It may look like there's more, but in fact, there's just more reported. And so, I just want to make that distinction. We put a lot of focus on outreach in these cases.
And these are our detective numbers since 2009. And as you can see, our caseload's going up, but our detective staffing is really not growing with the same sort of level. Right now, as you're probably well aware, we're in probably one of the biggest trials of our career. It involves a fellow law enforcement officer that was killed. Longmont Police was asked to lead this investigation. We are honored to take on that case for the Colorado State Patrol. But this case is, we've got two people as witnesses that are advisory witnesses in this case, and it's estimated to take two weeks. But there has been thousands of hours that has gone into work on this case. And it's very important to our community and the family of the deceased trooper. Levi Rosales, just a quick, he was a pawn slip. A pawn slip and a McDonald's receipt is what broke this burglary and car theft. Levi Rosales was later involved in a shooting about eight months later with one of our officers. He pulled a rifle on an officer. Turned out to be a BB gun. But just a McDonald's receipt from Lakewood is what cleared the auto theft in this case. They were able to get video and ID Levi. Our case assignments, again, are going up. And I can keep showing you other ways about that. And just again, in comparison, there's our numbers compared to some other cities with similar patterns. And just as a last note, I would like to point out, Longmont is the third safest city in Colorado, over 75,000. And it's because of the great work of our police officers and our detectives and our gang unit. And that helps keep our crime low. But at some point, there's going to be a tipping point for our officers. We can only do so much with overtime and everything. So, any extras would be appreciated. Thank you.
Questions for Jeff or myself on police services?
That was a pretty impressive presentation.
I'm glad you were listening.
Wow. Yeah, I can see with technology and DNA and, I mean, our world is just getting more and more complex. And it does take a lot more hours to dot all of our i's and cross all of our t's. And yeah, it's a difficult.
Yeah. And we're very appreciative of the five officers that we're going to get next year.
Right.
And we're obviously in need of more as we can find ways to help with that. So...
Well, Harold, should we consider maybe going out to another vote of the people to raise the public safety tax? I mean, how are we going to solve this?
Well, that's definitely one of the issues. I mean, this year, what we had to do in the budget process is bridge a gap with general fund dollars. What you're going to hear is that there's other general fund needs that are coming in for other issues. And so, I mean, if you truly want to attack this issue and some of the other public safety issues, that's really going to be the solution.
Right. Yeah. And didn't we used to be the second safest city? So, now we've slipped one position?
And I think...
You know, we're neck and neck with our VADA. And we, you know, we're just right there.
And I think part of it, too, is also just, I mean, we also have to watch performance and where we are in terms of what we're seeing. I mean, so there's a lot of work that we have to go through. But if you were to say, what is the immediate way to deal with this? That's the immediate way to deal with it.
Right. Well, I think we all know what the desired outcome is here. And, you know, I think public safety is a core value of this city. Counselor Member Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Well, thanks for the presentation, Jeff. You guys are amazing for getting done what you are getting done with the resources you have. And I can understand the need for more resources. You can only manage lower-level staffing levels when you, for short periods of time. Over time, you're going to start to lose employees that have been with the company a long time. You lose all that training, all that local knowledge. And it's a short-term view to say we shouldn't fund it. So, I think we need to definitely put it out there to say, this is what the public safety requires at the level that this city's come to expect. And I think we just put it out there and say, let's fund this. That's my, I would suggest that we go ahead and work on how we're going to do this and when we're going to do it. Because I don't think we want to wait until two years from now or three years from now, because I think we'll see more problems arise with the department. And we need to make sure that we keep our officers that we have already. And we need to make sure that they can take vacations. We need to make sure that they're not, that overtime is manageable. I'm sure there's some that would like some overtime, but there's probably a lot of them that could care, would really not care to do overtime. So, let's figure it out and get it out there so we can come up with a solution.
I agree. Thank you. And we have significant investment in our officers, or the community has significant, I mean, academies and equipment and training. Like you said, that job knowledge for an officer, it takes five years before they really get comfortable in their job. And dispatch, I would believe, is the same way. You know, you don't really get good at it till you got about five years into it.
Counselor Member Christensen?
Yeah, I agree. I do think that, as Councilwoman Finley said, that increasing the tax would be, in a modest way, would be a very good idea. But we also really need to figure out ways to be helpful immediately, because we can't let our officers be so stressed out that they quit, or they make mistakes, or they endanger themselves or other people. When you're, it's a highly stressful job. And when you're stressed out day after day after day, and you're in a very powerful and responsible position like that, it's just not right for us to go on with a 9% increase in the population and a 5% decrease in the police. That's, it's a dangerous and a very foolish path to go down. So, I would like us to figure out a way that we can give you more than what, than those five positions. But, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Member Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. So, it's just some interesting pieces of data that I took away from your presentation. So, I might understand that crime hasn't increased.
That's correct.
Right?
I mean, it ebbs and flows, but it stays within the...
Pretty steady. I'm also seeing that, on average, we're increasing significantly calls coming into the department, correct?
And not only calls, but calls that require more than one officer.
Okay. And so, my question is, and it goes back to kind of my snarky comment last week when Karen was on the podium, which was, as a community, right, are there things that we're doing, I mean, in private, when I'm talking to certain police officers in the fire department, the comments I'm hearing, and I might not be getting the proper perspective on things, but my understanding is that homeless, mental illness, there is an increase in these incidents as a result of things that the city and nonprofits are doing. So, on one hand, I guess my question is, we continue to do things over here for homeless, for the homeless population and our human services, which leads to issues such as this. And it's kind of this vicious cycle. So, my question is, not question, I'm a statement, I'm with Counselor Member Moore and Counselor Member Christensen, that I think we need to figure out a way to support and finance our police department. But I think that that's not the only thing we should do. We need to take a hard look at, why is the library getting an influx of people that are causing us to send our police officers? Why are we, and we can't continue to do both things. And so, I'm for funding the police and the fire department and giving them what they ask for. But I also think we should challenge our staff to come back with a plan to, where are the calls coming from? And then look at the human services or the charity that we're giving that are allowing transients and outside Longmonters to enter our community that requires us to hire more police departments, or police staff for our department. I think that just funding it would be silly not to take a hard look at those things.
So, what I can say is, we do have folks working on all of those issues. And I think it's hard, I mean, all of these issues are multifaceted. And so, for any one issue, I can point to a half a dozen factors that contribute to that, and they all have their own look. And so, as we talked about and as Karen presented last week, we do have a group that's working on a lot of those issues.
Do we know when that, do we know when we'll get some feedback on that?
The first piece of it, I believe, is coming up within the next meeting or two in terms of the conduct in facilities. They're now working on conduct in terms of our outdoor areas. I know there's conversations with that group and other people that are involved in this in terms of what can we do collectively to manage a situation. And I go back to what I said the last time. And I do agree, you can't staff up to deal with every single situation that you can encounter. So, you're always trying to strive for that balance. But in a lot of this, it is really a broader community solution when we start talking about all of these issues. And it's going to require, and so, we talked about it the last time, we are going to provide training for everyone in the organization so we can all try to be part of the solution and hopefully reduce the number of calls that we're sending to the police department as we're working through these issues. But unless everyone starts moving in that world and we start collectively engaging, not only as an organization, but as a community, there's still going to be a point where the impact, we're going to be chasing the impact. And so, that's a big part of the discussion that's been going on. And if you look at the mental health conversation that Mike and Karen worked on, again, another example of that piece is how we're trying to engage the community with the organization to be part of this. Frankly, as I indicated before, to a certain extent, we had to get our own issues in order internally and structure how we're going to approach it before we could start talking in that more global community scale.
I guess, thank you. I appreciate that. I'll look forward to it. And I guess, really what I'm doing is pointing out that when you try to help everyone, there are unintended consequences. And we're hearing that from our police and our public safety officials. And so, I'd like to just, I'm looking forward to your report. Thanks.
And you know, I will also say, Counselperson Bagley, that there is a study being done, I think, that will give us more information about the dynamics related to homelessness and perhaps addiction and perhaps some mental illness. I think that will come forward. It may or may not be that the dynamic of you build it and they will come all together. There's probably a lot of other issues going on out there. And you can think of affordable housing. You can think of other issues that are in play in our community that I think contribute to these issues as well. The other thing I'm going to end with here is, there are other needs in fire, that there are other needs in, what you haven't heard is any presentation tonight on support staff, that in some of those positions up there were support staff. Nor have you heard any needs from the Office of Emergency Management. What we're going to do is, we're going to hold off on those presentations tonight. And I think what we will end up doing is bringing this all back in a better package. And if we're interested in doing something in terms of increasing the public safety tax, we will come back with a more complete presentation then.
Yeah. So, what I heard is bring it back to look at the public safety tax. We will then work on that internally to give some options for counsel to consider. And then you can direct us in terms of how to move forward.
Okay. Counselor Member Beck?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Along with that data, I noticed in your presentation, Jeff, that a lot of the calls were for domestic violence, not just for street people or whatever. So, what I would be curious about is how many of those were the result of drugs and/or alcohol versus personal problems?
So, domestic, we respond to about 700 domestic violence a year. We end up with about 400 arrests. And I would say a large portion of those, alcohol is involved, drugs are involved, and a lot of controlling behavior by primarily male adults. And we see a lot of it. We have, the thing that we're seeing is, we're getting a lot of reports from third parties right now, which is great, because we're getting the message out there. This is unex... is unacceptable. And so we're getting a lot of reports. And when you look at our domestic violence arrests compared to Boulder, ours are much higher. Boulder's a slightly larger city. Why is that? People feel comfortable reporting it here because it's happening in Boulder at the same rate. I, I mean, you know it is, I mean, in, in all these cities. So we, we have a lot of outreach that we do with our, the Safe Shelter, Levi. We do a lot of outreach, we do a lot of education, we do a lot of education in the schools, and we have a high reporting rate. And unfortunately, we also have a lot of alcoholism, addiction, that contribute to this crime and many other crimes in our community.
So the mental health issue should be a, a part of that larger discussion in the community?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. To add on to what Councilmember Bagley was talking about, or Mayor Pro Tem Bagley, excuse me. I really think that maybe at our next retreat, we could talk about, because you guys have been working on it, perhaps at a retreat coming soon, we could talk about social impact issues and what their impact is on our community, and maybe how we can address that.
That's a great idea.
Councilmember Christensen?
Yeah, I, I think that Councilwoman Finley has a very good idea. I would also like to point out that in the, in Longmont, according to the Trends Report, eighty, seventy-five percent of the homeless are women and children. So, and if you looked at the, the charts that you presented, a huge number of the cases were domestic violence. And, and a lot of the, which is, is very problematic, and I want to thank you for going to the schools and talking to people when they're young, because people sometimes don't even recognize that they've been raised differently than some of us. And they need to understand when they're young not to put up with this and not to, not to get involved in this, and that it's wrong. And this, and that's our community value, that it's wrong. It's a human moral value. But the other thing that I've heard a lot of is that the people call, people call the police for, you know, if there's a loose dog or a loose cat, and you can go get the dog and cat, go get the dog and cat and take it down yourself, don't call the police. Or they call the police when they could talk to their neighbor and just say, you know, I, I'm, I don't want to bother you, but here's a problem for me, and I would like you to address it. Call the, talk to your neighbor first before you call the police because it takes, I, from what I've heard, this is a considerable portion of your calls, is people who could be talking to their neighbor.
Yeah, and just a real quick response to that, Councilperson Christensen, we, we did an internal study in terms of the kinds of calls that were going on that are similar in nature to what you just described. And we've actually made some significant adjustments to 12 different types of calls along those lines. There's still a community expectation out there that we're working with, but we are slowly but surely trying to figure out what those calls look like and how we can minimize our response or send a more measured response or a different kind of response, just so you know that.
And our communications center does a really good job with filtering a lot, you know, they take 173,000, so they do a really good job of filtering some of those out also. And taking care of them and addressing them at that phone call, which is very helpful.
Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I just have one more comment. Now, it's, as a community, we're responsible for the public safety of all our citizens, as well as people that come and visit. And we really can't control the outside influences that create these social issues. Even, you know, there's general social impacts of unemployment or substance abuse, other economic conditions, throw this into the mixer, and what comes out are these problems. And if we don't address them, if we don't, if we're not prepared to, to move with these type of issues, then we're not being responsible as a city and to our residents or our visitors. So it's not, well, I guess what I'm saying, it's not our fault, but, but we still have to take care of the problem.
I imagine this is probably one of those things where it's 2% of the people are, are creating 98% of the call volume. And, because I mean, when I look at our safe neighborhood, I never see, I mean, I never see any reason for any police cars to, or fire trucks to ever make a call to most citizens.
I agree. Longmont is a very, very safe place to live. We have a great, like, safety department, our fire department or police department.
It still, it still comes down to, you know, when people ask us, is it safe to live in our community? Our answer is still, it depends who you live with. So, but it still comes down to that quite a bit.
All right. Well, thank you.
Mayor, we have some other departments that we want to go through, presentation, similar, shorter presentations on this. I think one of the things I wanted to take the opportunity is, is to really state, when, when you look at the issues that they just presented, and you look at the issues that Karen's going to present, and that Sandy's going to present, and then next week Dell is going to present, in terms of what we're struggling with in the budget. The reason why we wanted to add this, this year, is because we go through about three days of this every budget cycle in terms of what we're moving through. And we thought, A, it was really important to give you a sense of how we're making our decisions and, and how we're funding. But the other piece that I think, and you all mentioned it, is that when we look at the organization and we talk about these needs, I think the other thing that's important is, we don't hear a lot of complaints about our services and what our folks are being able to do compared to what you may see in other places. And I think that's also a testament of the fact that we have asked folks in our organization to do more. And, and they are, they are doing more, and, and making positive contributions to our community on a daily basis. And really, that's a testament to, to their dedication to, to Longmont.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Karen Roney with Community Services Department. Okay, so, here we go. So we spent a, a good amount of time talking about what happens in, when we have scenarios where, where folks don't have a healthy start in life, when they don't have their basic needs met, and we aren't addressing the root causes of bad behavior. You see the cost for what that is in, in our community. And I'm not naive enough to say that the, us in, in Community Services, that, that we will, we solve all those issues. But certainly what we are about in Community Services is, we are about working with people. Ultimately, the city, the people are the city, and that is really the, the focus of what we do. We work with individuals, from our youngest residents to our oldest residents, and really do our best to make sure that, that everyone in our community, as much as possible, has access to resources and services so that they can have, they can be successful in their educational achievement. They can have the skills and the knowledge that they need to be successful and live successful lives, whatever their circumstances might be. So we, we're, work with individuals who, they are retired, they have all their resources need, and they just really want to continue to have meaning and purpose in life. We also work with individuals and families who are in extreme poverty, and they don't even know where their next meal is going to come from, and everyone in between. So really, what we are trying to do is address some of the root causes of, of bad behavior and, and the cost of, of really not addressing what people need to be successful early on in, in their lives. So we, so we are seven different divisions. We offer a variety of services, and on an annual basis, we touch about, we have about 2.5 million encounters with individuals through our senior services, children, youth and families, recreation and golf, library, housing and community investment, community and neighborhood resources, and I hope I didn't forget one. But what we really try to do is work with individuals and, and really try to address some of the, the issues that people are dealing with. And they are complex, and they do involve a lot of work on behalf of our staff in terms of relationship building, working with others in the community on partnerships, and really dealing with long-term issues. I recall not long ago, the mayor and I took a trip to Boulder to, to work on homelessness issues. And one of the things he says, he says, "I don't know how you do your job, Karen. You know, there is never an end to the issues that your staff deals with." So, so we, these are, again, a list of the kinds of things that we do to really help people, what we call is help people get from, more from life, regardless of what their circumstances are. So I think to Mayor Pro Tem Bagley's, one of his points, is that we do try to focus on, in our work, prevention and early intervention services that really help to address human needs before they become big, huge social problems. Again, we aren't, we can't do that alone, and we spend a lot of time, in our role as city government, convening, pulling people together, and pulling entities together, and looking at how can we help to address, address issues and share responsibility in, in making sure that, that people have their needs met and they are self-sufficient. So again, we do recreation and leisure services, a variety of community problem-solving issues. We work with neighborhoods to help build capacity within the neighborhoods so that, again, that the city can be a partner with our neighborhoods to ensure that neighbors and residents in those neighborhoods have a high quality of, of life. We, we offer arts and cultural services, lifelong learning and education, which we think is, is, is the key to success in life. If you have a healthy start in life, you have all the education that you need so that you can be a productive, contributing adult in life, that goes a long way, to having a vibrant and thriving community. We also manage around 15 public facilities where we provide all these services, and, and we are, we, we do a lot. These are some of our guiding principles that I'm probably not going to take a lot of time, being mindful of, of your time here this evening. But again, I just want to talk about what we try to do is, we try to be a catalyst for, for issues, to address some of these complex needs, to really organize and bring together people and agencies that really can help to affect our, and develop effective community response, responses. Certainly, we, we are aligned with, so you hear a lot about what public safety is doing in terms of doing outreach and working with individuals and helping individuals feel like they belong, feel like they're included, feel like they're a part of this community. That is also a big, a big part of what we do in terms of, of inclusion and making sure that people feel like they, they belong and they own any kind of solutions to the issues that we're, that we're dealing with. So I'm going to hit some of the critical challenges and issues that we, that we're, we're faced with now, we've been facing for a long time. So we, again, this was mentioned in the previous presentation. So we are working in partnership with many individuals and many entities to try to address some of the complex issues facing our community today. A lot of times, people will come to this podium, they will look to City Council, and they say, you know, you should, you should take care of homelessness. You should make sure that no one lives in poverty in this community. You're elected to do that, and that's really what you're, what you're supposed to be doing. So we're just wondering, what, no, so, so we know that government, that it's not government's role to, to solve all those problems, but government does have a role in being at the table and working with the community on these complex issues. And these are some of the ones listed here that are pretty prominent, you know, right now. And to, and really to, again, answer, I think, Council, Mayor Pro Tem Bagley's question about, so when are we going to hear more back from the study that we're doing now regarding homelessness? That our target is that that will, that will be coming back in, in November for, again, for the report in terms of what are the issues and what would be a more seamless and effective service delivery system to address those, those issues. We have certainly, over the past several years, talked about the challenges of people in our community not having housing that they can afford, and the impact on individuals and families around that. Certainly in the 2017 budget, we were able to add some additional ongoing revenues to, to hit that $1 million investment on an annual basis to help recapitalize the Affordable Housing Fund and help to make more affordable housing options available for our community. So we are, we are there at about $540,000, I believe, starting in 2017. So we, we aren't quite there yet, but I believe as the city manager committed to council early on, is anything that we could do and any amount that we could invest in ongoing general fund dollars, that we would do that. Obviously, we're going to hear back from the customer satisfaction survey, because we do have questions in that survey around, around a possible tax increase, which council has certainly talked about. We, we work with individuals and communities around resilience and self-sufficiency. So that's often an inquiry that we get to our department when people are, are struggling. They, whether that's neighborhoods, whether that's individuals, and they're looking for, you know, how can they be more resilient? How can they be better positioned to, to move through and move forward when, when stressors happen in their life and in their, in their neighborhood? So we spend, that, that's a challenge. We, again, we are not doing that alone. We are partnering with other city departments and the community to help our neighborhoods and individuals in those neighborhoods to be more resilient. We have increased demands for providing customer service in our, on our facilities. And I, I think, as I mentioned a couple of slides ago, that we do, that we, we manage a lot of our public facilities. There's a lot of people that go through those facilities, and as I talked a little bit about last week in terms of some of the, the challenges, so it's, it's not just dealing with some of the behavioral issues, but, but certainly, we are continuing to try to figure out how do we manage those facilities, keep up with the demand, make sure that everyone's customer experience is, is a positive one, and deal with not only the human beings, but also the challenges in terms of, of maintenance and making sure that those facilities remain clean and, and in good condition for, for our, for our community and for our participants in those areas. The, we, we have done, I think, a pretty incredible job as a department. I'm very proud of the work that our department does and our staff does to really do their best to push their capacity to be able to continue to respond to the needs in the community, the customer service demands. But at some point in time, we do have to look at, you know, ultimately, we, as you heard from the police department, ultimately, there are more staff that oftentimes are, are needed to help us be, to be successful. And particularly, again, we talked a little bit about this in the previous budget presentations, is that there are ongoing demands and expectations from, from our, our, our government, from our leadership in, in the, in the city to, you know, how do we generate? How do we generate additional revenues? How do we make sure that when we bring the new Stewart Auditorium online, that we are generating the revenues that we need? generating the revenues that we need to be able to support the operations for that, and not just continuing to rely on the, the general fund to, to, to support all of the, all of the services? With, with the museum, we, we are saying we need to have better and high-quality, or continue to sustain our high-quality exhibits. And, you know, we can't just continue to do that with, you know, 1.5 exhibit staff members who are, who are doing amazing work and partnering with the community to offer, offer exhibits. So, we had the Low Rider opening on Saturday. We had the all-time, we broke our record, we keep breaking records, all-time high for an opening event with over 1,500 individuals that came through the museum in that four-hour period to see that, to see that exhibit. So, that is all part of the Quality of Life work that we are, that we are doing. Our temp wage increase that I have talked about up here is that we offer for our Recreation Services and primarily, but other services in our, our department, that we are having a hard time just meeting the, the wage for, for our temp, for our temp workers. So, demands for lifeguards are pretty high around, around the region, and we are continuing to look at how, you know, we're having to compete with that workforce in, in other areas, and how do we increase our temp wages so that we have adequate staffing to staff all of our, our facilities? We're struggling with that in Children, Youth and Families, as well as in the, is in, in So, our old adult population, again, this is something that you heard about, I think, in Invision Longmont, is that we're, we're, we're getting older, we're living longer, more people are coming here. A lot of times, people are coming here because their, their adult children live here, and, and they know that Senior Services has an incredible array of opportunities and resources. So, there's lots of different reasons that people are coming here, but again, the, the volume of the requests, what folks are requiring, and I think the thing that is very heartbreaking is that we all, we have older adults in our community who have, who have no one in their life to count on, no one to support them, that they are all alone, and what we are seeing is an increase in our case management demands. We provide that service for our lower income, lowest income, older adults who really have been abandoned, or really, they have no one in their life to help them to, to maintain some level of, of self-reliance in their, in their older years and when they become more frail. So, that is a higher demand on our, our staff for that. We are also looking at how we can continue to be more engaged in outreach and capacity building and providing services outside of our four walls. So, this is where we put our, our library E resources, so that's for Judith back here, is that, you know, Judith and her staff have done an incredible job of being as efficient as they can, responding to the changes in technology, helping people to know that there are so, so many resources you can get for your local public library, and you don't even necessarily have to walk into that building. So, so, we are doing our best to keep up with technology, and there are just ultimately some additional resources that we need in order to keep up with the demand, you know, such as, such as a lot of our E resources that, that are available. We are Children, Youth and Families, I think we've talked about that, that they are, they are serving more families in need outside of the youth center. So, they are going into neighborhoods, they're going into countryside village, into our parks during the summer, partnering with Recreation and the library to really help provide learning, summer learning, food, people who are, who are hungry, who really don't have enough food to eat, and to have a recreation experience. It's made a huge difference in some of our communities and neighborhoods and families, and we think it's important to continue to do more of that, and not just turn our back on families that need us so that we don't have bad things happen downstream. And continuing to outreach to our neighborhoods. So, so you know that we have a very active neighborhood program. We have around 50 registered neighborhood groups. There is a, a good portion of our neighborhoods that are not necessarily organized, and our interest is to reach out and engage neighborhoods who aren't likely to just show up and say, "Hey, we're going to organize. We want to go after those, those neighborhood grants." They have different needs, different issues, and it requires a different level of intervention and engagement with them, so that none of our neighbors, neighborhood areas are, again, are left behind and remain at a, at a higher risk. Oops. So, that is a fast run-through, and, and I guess in closing, you know, really what I, I want to give a shout-out to our Community Services Managers and to all the staff that work in Community Services. I think many of you already know this, and I want to just reiterate it, is that our staff works really hard to stretch the city resources that it has available. We write grants. We have four Friends organizations that are out there raising money to help really supplement and to really help that we're not in front of you with more requests than you see. A month ago, we had a $600,000 contribution come into the Friends of the Longmont Senior Center. We have the Friends of the Library who sell books all the time, that have events all the time. We have the Friends of the Museum that were, that were, you know, critical in helping us to raise money, for us to build, help build the auditorium. They, they help fund our, our early education programs at, at the museum. And we have the Friends of Longmont Youth. So, tomorrow night, we're holding an open house at the, we call it the Lashley Street Station, former fire station number three, just north of the youth center, and, and we are going after individual donors to, to basically get money to renovate that building. We, we, you might remember the DOLA grant that Christina wrote to go after some of the marijuana dollars. So, we are, we rewrote that grant, and we're going after money to see if we can get those dollars in. So, I just, I just can't reiterate enough what your staff in Community Services does to really not have to come before you with as many needs as we, as we have. We are at the point in summer, and that's really what we try to be judicious and what we ask for. So, what do we think we really need to get support, additional support from the general fund to do that our, our volunteers, our donors, you know, are, are doing their part? And sometimes, we, we come before City Council and say, "You know, we, we really need a little extra." They, they do absolutely amazing work, and I just want to recognize them and recognize the community members who are a part of those efforts that really help to share that responsibility as an entire community, that we are all responsible for making sure that we are all successful and thriving in Longmont. And that concludes my comments, and I would be glad to answer any other questions.
I still think you have a really hard job.
You know, yes, and, again, I can't think of a more dedicated group of people who, you know, because at this level, at the local government level, you absolutely get to see the results of your efforts. And there are stories back here that would just, they're stories. And so, it's those stories and the wonderful things that happen, just like when Michelle gets a con, you know, Michelle gets contacted by someone in the community and say, "Hey, a, a couple that was served by the Longmont Senior Center and Senior Services has just donated $600,000, has just left you $600,000 in the world because of what you did, and, and the difference that you made in people's lives." And that is really what we're talking about. So, that's what keeps us helping people to be ready to learn, ready for life, early intervention, prevention, so that we're not having to spend hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars on the, the back end, that really, no one wants to be spending those dollars. So, thank you. I know I'm, okay, done? Any other questions?
We're getting close. We have one more presentation, but if you want to go ahead and make a motion to go past 11:00 in case we get locked up, I would appreciate that.
Does any of you want to make a motion?
I would make a motion that we continue on past 11 o'clock, so we can get this, part of it wrapped up.
Motion's been made and it's been seconded. Go ahead, Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor James. I will vote for this if we make Councilmember Finley go home, because she has a swollen knee, she's been a trooper, and so, a friendly amendment. I moved, I think that we extend past 11:00 and kick Councilmember Finley out of the building.
Yeah, we're going to vote her out.
There's, there's a chance that we can move through it pretty quick.
Okay.
All right, good.
Let's go.
She's got one slide.
Just a minute, we got to vote on the motion.
Oh, yeah. Which one? To send her home?
Yeah, to send her home. All right, that passes five to zero.
I'll stay till 11:00.
Yeah.
I'll be done before that.
Okay, yeah, passes six to zero. Councilmember Santos Sampson.
All right, Sandy Cedar, Assistant City Manager with the Shared Services. I'm the closer for the evening, apparently, and here's my massive one slide. First of all, I want to just acknowledge everything else you heard today, because everything that the city does is just amazing. Everything that's happening in Public Safety, everything that's happening in Community Services, what you're going to see in Public Works, all the work that happens in LPC, and, and we are here in Shared Services to support all of that. Their work plans become artwork plans, and, and so their unmet needs become part of our work as well. So, that's kind of the short version. The other thing I would say when it comes to Shared Services is that we do have some staffing shortages here and there, but it's not anything that you haven't, types of things you haven't heard already. And the big word that you'll notice on this slide is technology. So, as you know, we had a, a fatality of our network system, which isn't nearly as important as what's happening with some of the officer safety, until they can't connect with what's happening. And so, the technology is important. We just rebuilt the network infrastructure. I think I sent y'all an email saying that it's done, but there's lots more to do. We are keeping status quo in this year's budget with the security enhancements and with some of the software pieces, but we're not going to be keeping ahead of the bad guys. We're going to be keeping status quo with those things. And so, the unmet needs in Shared Services really include technology systems, technology security, technology staff, and all those things that help to keep the organization up and running. And so, we really appreciate everything that all the city staff does. It's just amazing, and, and thank you for the work of your community as well. And with that, I'm out.
That was awesome.
Wow.
So, Mayor, Council, obviously, so there, there's, there's a connection to all of this. So, we started with budget prioritization. When we look at budget prioritization and how we move through it, these are the things that we're focused on in providing those services that you all have indicated are important to our community. We then say, "Here are the unmet needs." What I wanted to also say in this process is, we are doing a lot of different things. We are saying, "Folks, we can't fund our way through a lot of these situations," and so, we have to really work together as an organization to say, "How do we, as multiple departments come together to manage some of these really big issues for our community? And, and how do we increase our organizational engagement with each other to provide solutions that are comprehensive?" And so, we are constantly working these issues to try to find different ways to, to move through and provide our community with more services at a higher level in managing the issues that we need to. So, we are working on a lot of things, but what you will see over the next year, you will see some of these things being brought back to you in, in a lot of different forms, in terms of how we're bringing certain solutions to certain pieces. But we wanted you to see, this is what we're dealing with that we weren't able to deal with in this year's budget. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Finley.
So, you just wanted us to feel as bad as you feel when everybody comes in and wants things and needs things that we don't have any money for.
Not really. But I think it's, it's also to give you a perspective, when we come in and say, that's part of it, but, but when we come in and we start talking about, "We can't do this because of this," this really allows you all to have that same perspective that we have, when sometimes you go, "I really wish they would do this," and we're saying, "We really can't do this." I think that's the important piece of the conversation.
Wow, it's been a long night. Yeah, I, I think we needed to hear this as a council to get more perspective on what we can't fund, but what is definitely needed. So, I guess now's time for Mayor and Council comments. No? Not on a study session? Well, I guess since no one's got anything to say, I'll move on to City Andrew's remarks.
No comment, Mayor, Council.
Okay. City Attorney, any comment? All right, this meeting is over.